Oh yeah, no problem.
Hey, look at old, hey, look at old Clean Cut down there. I didn't even recognize you. But who is that guy?
It's a lot lighter, huh?
He looks a lot younger than you.
Yeah, hey.
He looks really a lot younger.
You were starting to look like one of us.
I sent my, I did what you said and shaved it different.
Yeah, in different deal?
A bunch of different looks.
Yeah.
And I sent them all to Loopy and I said, "Take your prick."
How'd it look when the band died?
But I didn't have the, I didn't have the right razor for me or at the conference. So as soon as I got home, that's actually, but I didn't take a chance, I didn't shave my neck. So my picture, I don't really care.
Why do I have two copies of some of this stuff? Do we have two copies of these things?
They're different. They're a little bit different.
Do you have two copies of that?
It's a little bit different.
Is there a reason why we have two copies of some things? Yeah, and the same thing here, it looks like. Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry, okay. But this is the same one, fifteen, oh, double oh six, right? I don't need more paper.
Thanks.
Clock's a little fast, we're waiting for, get to nine o'clock, satellite time. Okay. Call this meeting to order, you gotta kind of bear with me today. I've got, kind of got a frog in my throat and if I start sounding like the Godfather, I can't help it. But join me in the flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation and her God in the principle with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and please be seated. Okay, we will start out with Board of Supervisors Matters. Supervisor and Mr. Clean, Supervisor Vanderpool.
All right, well, I actually am kind of glad that Movember's over. I don't know how some of the gentlemen keep the mustache all year round. I was glad to shave mine off, but definitely glad to support a very worthy cause in Men's Health Awareness Month. Couple of things I wanted to go over that are taking place this week. One significant event in Tulare that's coming up is the dedication of the oak tree at Mission Oak High School. They actually built the high school around an oak tree that was lost during the drought. The tree did die, and so now they're going to be rededicating their oak tree this week. And that'll be a nice event and look forward to that. That's on Wednesday at 12:25. When you're in school, you've got very strange times that things start. So that takes place this week. The Tulare County Association of Realtors has their annual holiday luncheon. That will be taking place on Wednesday, I believe, but I do have the Mission Oak ceremony, so I'm not sure if I'm gonna be able to make that. But I sure appreciate what they do to collect donations to give to kids during the holidays. Also this week, the SJVIA has a meeting in Fresno on Thursday at nine o'clock. That's different than our usual day, meeting day of Fridays. That is at nine o'clock. And then also the, we are going to be having interviews for the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority consultant selection. That will be taking place on Thursday afternoon. ResCom, a company in Tulare, pest control company, has their annual holiday Christmas party at the Heritage Complex on Thursday at 11:30. And they actually donate all proceeds for their company Christmas party to the Salvation Army of Tulare. So really appreciate the work that they do. And then we're also gonna be having a meeting this week, hopefully wrapping up and moving forward on the property and evidence facility that we've been working on and the sub, or the ad hoc committee of the board with Supervisor Cox. So look forward to seeing that all get done this week.
Thank you, Supervisor Cox.
I can, I do have a question for Supervisor Vanderpool. This oak tree that died, do we know yet, was it Neil Pillagard or my fault?
I think it was your fault, Phillip.
I'm sure it must have been. Okay, last week, couple of things happened. We've been a week without a board meeting. I worked in the Visalia Christmas Parade, very good turnout for that parade. It seemed to be as heavy as it's ever been. Last Saturday, I attended the PAL breakfast with Santa. There were over 300 kids and they served over 400 breakfasts there at that event. Today, this afternoon, from 5:37, will be the Hispanic Chamber Open House at the State Farm Insurance on South Moonee. Wednesday is Realtors, tomorrow is the Realtors Association event where they bring in their new officers. And then Friday is the, I'll be working at the Visalia Chamber Christmas Tree Auction. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Cox. Supervisor Worley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, there was a meeting of the legal councils regarding the surface water treatment program that's working its way through the process of the northern part of our county. I believe we did hammer out some of the final provisions of that and so hopefully we're on our way there. Many of us attended the CSAC Conference down in Palm Springs this last week and there were some pretty good programs that I attended. And sometimes you go and you've come back and you think, "Well, did I really learn anything?" But I actually learned some very valuable things, I think, that hopefully will help us here in Tulare County at that particular conference. This coming Friday, the San Joaquin Valley Water Infrastructure Authority Board of Directors will be meeting in the Fresno Irrigation District. And we had a very favorable editorial in the Fresno Bee recommending the Temperance Flat Project, looking at it as a linchpin to dealing with water issues here in the San Joaquin Valley going forward. So it was very, very good to see that. And then, of course, the big event is this coming Saturday will be the London, and that's New London here in Tulare County, not London, England, Christmas Parade at one o'clock in the afternoon. So that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, thank you. Supervisor Oshida.
Well, I received a new iPad last week and it wiped out my calendar from two weeks before, so I'm not sure what I did two weeks before. But I also attended the CSAC meeting in Palm Springs. And the two topics that came up that was interesting was the topic of legalized recreational marijuana. We have counties that are embracing it and looking for tax revenue. And we have other counties, like in the valley, that have experienced a lot of associated crime with marijuana or generally still against it. The one thing that was surprising to me was I attended a meeting about jails, the new state laws that are pushing all these prisoners down into county jails. The thing I never thought about was that attorneys who constantly sue the state of California prison system are moving into suing the counties because of different issues that the counties don't provide the same services in a lot of cases to the prisoners that the state prison system provides. And if you provide medical to the prisoners as part of the sheriff's program, you're more inclined to be sued. But because we've transitioned out of that and hired an independent medical provider, we're probably in a lot better shape than many. But I know Fresno County is being looked at right now by these attorneys. And they have a lot of expertise in suing the state prisons. And probably the area they're gonna sue the most in will be mental health. What are you gonna do about the mental health prisoners? And also if, when you have long-term county inmates, you're gonna have to provide them, many of them, with annual physicals. So there's a lot of repercussions coming from the state moving all these prisoners down to the county level. So I thought that was quite eye-opening and hopefully we'll learn from the other counties because the other counties are willing to share their experiences with these large law firms moving in and reviewing their jails. So hopefully we're in good shape. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Wednesday I'll be attending the Board of Realtors for their officer installation. Also on Wednesday, in Porterville, they're gonna be having the groundbreaking for the new Green Power Bus Company, which is gonna start manufacturing buses next year, hopefully, in the Porterville area. These are electric-powered transit buses. And that should be a big impact on the local economy as far as creating jobs and also as the need for these buses as we go from diesel to CNG to electric power. So that could be a viable industry for this area in the future.
Mike, you might, that company came from Vancouver, British Columbia to Porterville.
Right, and I might-
Without any kind of, without any kind of effort on our part, they just showed up at the city's door and said, "We wanna do business here."
Yeah, well, I'm glad they're going where they are now instead of where they were looking at to start with. And my understanding is they've also purchased the Springville Inn and wanna use that as far as the rooms and stuff for their training people to come in and hopefully down the road are gonna open the restaurant back up too. So that could be another, you know, little star up there in the Springville area if we could get the Springville Inn open back up, because that was a very viable business at one time. Thursday we'll have the insurance meeting in Fresno, which is continuing. We continue to work towards trying to get our employees a better insurance plan. And also wanna congratulate Kyler Crocker on willing Alan Oshida's seat as First District. So be looking forward to working with Kyler and we have Amy coming on too. Of course, we're gonna miss Phillip. Phillip, you've done a great job, so.
I'm sure not too much, though.
But anyway, and that's all I have. So now we'll move to public comment. I do have one person that signed, Jose Sagala, wants to speak during public comment.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. Usually you know me here as an SCIU representative, but today I'm here with a different hat as a new incoming council member for the City of Tulare. And I wanted to talk about one particular item that was brought forward in the paper in the last weekend and that's the Page Interchange Project that is happening down in Tulare through TCAG and Measure R funding. As you well know, in 2006, voters supported Measure R that allowed up to about $650 million over 30 years to improve transportation around the county. When voters went to vote for Measure R, there were a number of projects listed that were put out there as projects. And Page Interchange was one with $25 million attached to it. And then there was an agri-business type of interchange with $17 million attached to it. So there was two of them that were proposing Measure R and voters supported that. And so one of the things that I wanted to talk about today is your role as Transportation Authority members is that there is an item that'll be coming before you next week to sort of bypass the City of Tulare in terms of its having the ability to provide some input. As we know, the city was stalemaided two to two over the last couple of council meetings when it came to making some recommendations on the alternatives and what to do with Page. Tonight, we're swearing in two new council members. Myself and Greg Nunley will be sworn in as new council members in the City of Tulare. So we are asking that proposal, that compromise, which I'm not sure who the compromise is with, I definitely don't think it's the City of Tulare that's part of that compromise, that that kind of be delayed. That gives us the new council members an opportunity to weigh in on this very important project. I have talked to TCAG staff plenty of times, talked to Mr. Smalley. There is no lose-it-or-use-it policy has been put out in the press. So Tulare County's not gonna, or Tulare City's not gonna lose 25 million. And there is no hard deadline by which this thing needs to be approved. So we're hoping that as Transportation Authority members, you kind of sort of support that tenet of conservatism of allowing local control, of allowing local say, of allowing the City of Tulare to have the opportunity to weigh in on this huge project. You know, like I said, there's gonna be two different, two new council members. We're gonna have probably different perspectives and we definitely wanna make sure something occurs in the city. So I would hope that on December the 12th, when the authority meets, that we have that ability to have an input on this project. And that the 65,000 residents that a duly-elected council represents have the opportunity to weigh in on this particular issue. So I ask, you know, as you move forward next Monday to consider that. I know that Mr. Vanderpool has brought forward a compromise and I hope that he allows the City of Tulare to be part of that process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. When else looking to, oh, wait. Hey. Boy.
Looks different than yesterday.
Boy, looks like we might have an aircraft carrier parked there.
Looked different today than yesterday. Good morning, members of the board, Mr. Spata, Ms. Bales Lang. I'll be brief, she already started the clock on me. I'd like to introduce our new Support Services Division Chief, Pete Marquez. Not to be confused with his brother, Paul Marquez, who worked at Tulare County for years. Pete's a second-generation firefighter, great, again, Woodlake High School alumni. He's transitioned, developed his career through City Visalia, Santa Clara Ranger Unit Fresno County. He has experiences in dispatch, prevention, site plan review, fire protection planning, recruitment and municipal rule and wildland fire protection. He's ascended through his career to the rank of Deputy Chief, the rank that he had before he came here. He will take our Communications and Prevention Center to a different level as well of our investigation program. He'll be able to make immediate contributions to our Tree Mortality Task Force as well as our agency rep with our ongoing urban interface program. From a community standpoint, he's served on the City of Selma's Planning Commission. He's been St. LaSalle's School Board Member. He's been a scout leader, Cal Rippon Youth Baseball Coach and a youth basketball coach. And most importantly, he's been married to his wife Patty for over 26 years. They have two children, Julia, Fresno State graduate and recent newlywed, and a son Chandler who's attending Fresno State. Map at a point, Pete Marquez, the Division Chief.
Congratulations.
Thank you, it's an honor to work for the county of Tulare and I look forward to working with the team at FIRE and making a contribution. Thank you.
Thank you, we look forward to working with you too. Thank you chief. Anybody else wishing to speak to the board?
Last time I was here, I had to switch. Yeah. Hi, I hope you remember me. My name is Pedro Hernandez. I am the South San Joaquin Valley correspondent for the Clean Power Exchange. And I will keep things brief again, I know you have plenty of things to worry about. I am here to invite, you know, the Tulare County Council and all these good people here to a community meeting. I am hosting next Tuesday, the 13th, at the Visalia Veterans Hall. So right over yonder, it is from 6 to 8. It is a presentation led by Woody Hastings, one of the movers and shakers for all six of the community choice energy agencies in California. All six of these agencies have effectively provided 100% renewable energy to businesses, residents and government agencies at lower prices than the utilities, the major utilities that, you know, serve most of these, or everybody here. In addition, you know, they provide, they enable consumer choice. And again, you know, have lots of co-benefits like environmental mitigation, local economic benefits, job construction, and again, just public health benefits as well. So there's gonna be a question and answer section after, in case anyone has any questions. You know, there's also a blog that I write, publicizing myself. I wrote about Lancaster Choice Energy, which is one of the newest community choice energy agencies out there. There's tons of government grants. And if anyone is interested in how community choice energy is playing out in the Central Valley, currently there are no operating agencies. But however, Kings County and Fresno County do have solar projects and works that provide energy for community choice energy agencies in the Bay Area. They provide energy for Marin Clean Energy and Peninsula Clean Energy. So the technology, the infrastructure, the know-how is there already. But this is gonna be a community meeting to kind of facilitate and answer any questions for people who would be interested in bringing this agency or, or local agency to the valley. So I have some invitations I'll leave over here and for anyone else interested, I'll leave some invitations over here. So thank you.
If I may just respond real quick.
Yes.
I had been in consultation with some of these folks and I have a conflict they won't be able to be there. But I was gonna say, it might be good if some, if anybody from our RMA staff could be there because Tulare County had actually looked at doing this. We would have been, very early on, when Kings River Conservation District was proposing to do this. And at the time, it was, would have been, I think, the first in the state. It came under severe attack by a local utility company, never got off the ground. But since then, there have been several successful areas in state where this is being done. So it's not, it's not a new concept and it might be something for us to look at. Anything we could do to reduce our utility costs to our local folks and our businesses, I think is a worthwhile thing for us to take a look at.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak under public comment?
Hello, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. I'm Doug Phillips and I'm a farmer, been farming in Tulare County here for more than 45 years. And my ancestors for over 100 years, so I know a lot about water and wells and I'd like to address-
Did you wanna speak to item 57?
Yes, this is-
Well, it'll be up, so you can speak at that time.
The public comment period is really for things that are not on the agenda.
Yeah.
So we'll have that, it'll be coming up later on as a public comment.
Okay, I would like to talk to you then. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody wishing, anybody else wishing to speak under public comment? Seeing no one, we will close the public comment and we will go to Consent Calendar. Okay, we're pulling item 20, item 32, 34 and 50 for a later date. And item, item number 43, we need to verbally amend the agenda. Needs to say, "Item number two, subject to review and approval by county council." Other than that, anybody else have any agenda items, consent calendar items they wanna pull?
Just a note, Mr. Chairman, item 54 is an untimed item, that will be pulled as well.
Right.
We will not have a presentation today on 54.
Okay.
Thank you.
54 is also being pulled off of the untimed items.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no other comments, I would approve, move approval of the balance of the consent calendar. I'll second that.
Moved by Supervisor Worley, second by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes. Vote is unanimous, thank you.
I'm sorry, Chairman, did we pull item number 15 because there needs to be an appointment made off of consent?
Okay, yeah.
I had something else going on, so I would have checked.
I see.
Is it, is it need for the alternate member?
Yes, the appointment needs to be made for the alternate member.
I'll amend my motion to approve the consent calendar and then item 15 will be handled separately.
Okay, thanks.
Okay with the maker of the motion? Give me a second. We recast our votes.
Okay.
And who is the second, I'm sorry?
Item number 15 will be, will be-
It'll be the balance of the consent counter, but item 15 will also drop off.
Vote unanimous. Okay, item number 15, I am appointed as a director, will need an alternate. I nominate Alan Oshida.
The JPA covers just District 5, however, the basin that the JPA is operating in also covers part of District 2.
Ah.
Since Mr. Oshida will be leaving the board very shortly, that Mr. Vanderpool looks like the-
Well, he could be, yeah, he can be the alternate.
The heir apparent.
Yeah. Supervisor Vanderpool will be the alternate.
I nominate Supervisor Vanderpool.
So then the motion is second. So the motion would be for-
Supervisor Vanderpool.
To be the alternate. Okay, who made the motion?
I did.
I second.
Moved by Supervisor Oshida, second by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes, vote unanimous, thank you.
Gotta get your feet wet.
Okay, now we'll move on to untimed items. Allocated position changes at Tulare County Information and Communication Technology. Item number 51.
Are one of these stacks of paper we have here with this item, Michelle?
Guys have had to receive a copy of this paper. Good morning, Board, DAO, Senate Council. We're here today to ask you to approve some allocated position changes in Tulare County Information and Communications Technology. The requests are to approve the resolution to add one full-time equivalent logistics planner and delete one full-time equivalent logistics technician. We also want to adopt the following new classification, class designation and grade effective January 8. Two Admin Services Programmer Analyst 3s with a salary grade of 251, bargaining unit 19, competitive services probation period and 13 pay periods. We also are asking to approve a change to the employment standards for the position of Project Manager 1, 2 and 3. Currently it asks for a degree and we're asking that we are able to substitute a year of experience for the education.
Can you pull that microphone down a little bit, please? I don't think people in the back can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, is that better? The need for these changes is necessitated by growth of the department and the county's increasing reliance on technic, technological solutions. With the logistics planner, this would help TCICT adjust to the increasing number of contractual issues faced by its logistics division. The cost of adding this position is included in the FY 1617 budget under professional and specialized expenses. Adopt the new class specification for the two Admin Services Programmer Analyst 3 position. These will be positions that are leadership roles within the organization and will provide mentoring and guidance for our more junior programmers. The responsibilities of the Programmer 3 does include the supervision of staff and the conducting of advanced, complex computer programming duties for our countywide electronic data processing system. These positions would promote increased productivity, accountability among the programming staff and improve the services to the client. And our third request, approve a change of the employment standards for the positions of Information Technology Project Manager 1, 2 and 3. This will allow us to do a better job of recruiting currently with the requirements that we have with a graduation from an accredited college or university with major coursework in computer science, management information systems, business admin, accounting or closely related field. The pool of candidates, qualified candidates that we get is very, very small. This will allow people, more people to apply for these positions and they will have experience coming in, so that, that experience is valuable also, although the education is still valuable and we recognize that. Altering the employment standards in this way allows TCICT to secure a more diverse range of employees and generally promote robust career growth. Current employees within the department will also be able to enjoy greater advancement opportunities. There would be no cost as a result of this change to the employment standards. The funds for the salary and benefits of the three FTEs are included in the FY 201617 budget. There is no net county cost associated with these requests as the funds are currently budgeted in the fiscal year 201617 budget. budgeted in the fiscal year twenty sixteen seventeen budget under professional and specialized The county's five-year strategic plan includes the organization's performance initiative to promote continuous improvement of organization's effectiveness and fiscal stability. These new and updated positions will allow the department to dedicate the staff needed to best fulfill TCICT's organizational principles and successfully meet the ever-shifting needs of our clients. Through these changes, TCICT will meet the organizational performance measures of the continually evaluating organizational structure to improve service delivery. Failure to authorize these positions changes will negatively impact the department's ability to serve its clients in an efficient and timely manner. Without these new and upgraded positions, TCICT employees may struggle to effectively maintain the level of quality expected by our clients and the department as a whole may face increased difficulty in attracting the best possible candidates. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Peg, how do we measure the effectiveness of these new positions? Can we talk about leadership enhancement and that sort of thing? Those are sort of lofty goals, but is there a way of actually measuring the impact of these positions to either improve or maintain the quality of level of service in your, in your agency?
When we talk about the logistics person, you can see it by the time it takes to process any of the contracts that come through. We want to improve the speed that we process those contracts and the payment for those contracts, the review of those contracts. So, there's measurables that we can put in place there. The programmer three positions, we're looking for improvements, specific improvements in the more junior people.
Thank you.
And those specific improvements will be measurable. On the program, the project managers, that's really to allow us to attract more candidates and a more diverse candidate pool. So, we'll be able to tell that by just the candidates that we're attracting.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Back to the board.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Moved by Supervisor Worley, second by Supervisor Sheedah. Cast your votes. Vote unanimous.
Just a comment about as she started off her presentation, Peg said, you know, the county relies more and more upon IT as being a way of increasing our efficiencies and operations within the county. So, our investment in that department has paid back many, many dividends over the years and we look, we look to the future for that to be a continuing process of making us more efficient. So, in the end result, we add a few positions, but on the other end, we may, may be able to save some positions, certainly on the growth, the growth of pattern.
True. Thank you.
Do you have, Peg, do you have fifty-two?
So, we're kind of back-to-back?
Yeah. Position allocation increase and receive a presentation.
The presentation is on the Amentum project and the Amentum project is the replacement of the property system. Project that has been a long time coming and a huge undertaking and one that we take very, very seriously. As you see, we have quite the list to cover, but none of these topics could be left off without also leaving out important information that has shaped our progress and decision points. If you have any questions or need clarification, please stop us as we go through the presentation. It is important to know that Tulare County was the first to suggest to work with what was called, what was named a phase zero implementation. Phase zero encompasses conversion of the Magnificent Seven Files, conversion of assessor sketches, implementation of new sketching software and hardware, software to allow them to complete multiple regression analysis for the assessor, cleanup of the address database within the current PIMS system for billing, purchasing of system software, approval and initial purchase of the eGov system, and initial training on the system. It has been very successful for both the county and for Thompson Reuters. Thompson Reuters is now using the phase zero approach with its other clients. This phase has allowed us to work on the project in a very crucial phase of data conversion at a more effective pace that facilitates improved results and allows staff to continue their day-to-day production schedules. We not only accomplished the goals of this phase, but also have been able to work on some other goals, allowing us to move forward on the next phase before starting the actual project phase one. Thompson Reuters provided a couple of multi-day seminars for the auditor, assessor, and ICT staff to demo the system and provide direction for data conversion. These seminars prepared us for the data conversion. Working hand-in-hand, Thompson Reuters, the auditor, the assessor, and ICT were able to complete conversion of many tables within the records, personal property management, and valuation. All of these tables have been approved by Thompson Reuters as passing phase zero. The team has also worked on cleaning up mailing addresses in the current system. There is an immediate payoff on that by providing us more accurate mailing information for when we mail out tax bills now. Thompson Reuters and the assessor have been in discussion to bring changes to Amentum system so that improvements to the Williamson Act calculations can be accomplished within the system. Thompson Reuters is including all of this within our contract at no additional cost. We also developed the functional specification for a new mobile tax sale module and provided this to Thompson Reuters. We will be considering adding this functionality to the system. In addition to mobile functionality for the assessor, the vendor has converted the drawing sketches to the new software we will use when implementing Amentum mobility. We have been meeting with the counties throughout the state on a regular basis, receiving valuable information to aid us in making better decisions for the projects such as our development of the system hardware and software which we have begun to purchase. We've been learning from other people's mistakes, so we don't make the same ones again. Finally, we have purchased eGov which will provide us the ability to better serve our constituents by allowing them improved access to their data. Our kickoff meeting took place during the week of June twentieth, twenty sixteen. We had approximately six Thomas Reuters employees and fourteen county employees working together to discuss the next phase of the project and review in detail our current data conversion along with next steps for the following ninety days. During phase one, we had developed our project management documentation, received access to the test system from the cloud, set up our base configuration on the system, the brain of the system, and developing a full conversion data set. This will allow us to fully engage in our data conversion and configuration setup of the new system. I would like to introduce to you Anne Curz, Director of Sales with the Western Region of Thomas Reuters, and she has a few things she would like to talk to you about.
Good morning, Board members. Thank you so much for hosting me today. So, I wanted to share a few slides.
Excuse me, could you speak closer to the mic so?
Is that better? Sorry. Yeah, I think I'm a little short, that's probably why. So, it's important to note that our work in California is significant. It's comprised not only of custom development that's been happening at San Diego and Riverside Counties, but it in effect started with user stories when we first entered the market in California over a decade ago. We have a lot of testing scenarios that we're currently putting in place and we have staff experience that has been years in the making. This truly has been decades long to bring an integrated property tax solution to the, to the Cali, state of California and the counties here. The effort being deployed at the larger jurisdictions, in particular Riverside County, which is our benchmark, is a testament to the commitment of Thompson Reuters and what the continued commitment that we are making to deliver a fully integrated innovative solution that addresses all the complexities within the state of California related to the R and T code, which as Peg can attest to is very complicated. There are also jurisdictional requirements that come into play with each county, so we need to take those into account as well. To comprehend the level of effort that it takes to deliver a property tax collection and dispersment system for California, it's important to understand the work that Thompson Reuters, along with the Riverside Crest team, has already completed in our work effort to bring Riverside live. So, a couple of things that are unheard of in this particular market is having over two thousand test case scenarios. These are actual defined test cases related to the California R and T code that a county has to process in order to be able to assess properties, tax properties, and then collect and disperse all of those funds. So, we will have completed over three point four million tests at Riverside by the time we get them live, which is just, if you think about that, it's daunting really, but it's a necessity. This is a very complex solution that we are in, I'm sorry, that we are putting into place for California. Riverside in and of themselves and probably very similar to Tulare County, they had over a hundred-plus ancillary systems running in their environment. We're taking them to one data model, one database. So, that's significant migrating from a hundred systems over to one. We are doing over eighteen conversion runs. Peg talked a little bit about the conversion effort and converting your data out of your mainframe into Amentum's data model. We're doing actually eighteen runs at Riverside County, also very significant and unheard of in this particular industry. We have over seventy thousand engineering hours just for California counties relative to what we are deploying at Riverside, which is a single code line version of software. We have, we're upwards of five hundred automated regression tests and we continually are adding more. We currently have passed over five thousand requirements by Riverside. One of the things to note is we are currently in a surge effort at Riverside County. As I speak, we have over forty staff from Thompson Reuters deployed at the county, working hand-in-hand with their crest team. The crest team members are between forty to forty-five people that are dedicated to the project. This work effort is to get our single code line version completely tested and vetted by Riverside County, again, almost a million parcel jurisdiction, so that we can deploy it, go live, and then follow through with the other counties behind them, such as Tulare County. So, we have implemented agile. It's a process that helps speed the project tasks. It helps with the testing and gets us to those milestones faster. It's where we actually put all the team members together. Those team members come from our product management team, comes from engineering, our professional services. They all work hand-in-hand on a particular test case scenario. Peg, which button? Sorry. Great. So, when we, we look at, we look at California team in the future, and I think in terms of Tulare this way as well, really to be able to deploy a project like this, to be able to be successful in a complex IT-focused project, it requires a partnership approach. We have that with Riverside and we have that with Tulare County. I did talk about the thirty-five Thompson Reuters individuals that were, were working on the project, but for the surge effort, we upped that and it's been over forty-five people on-site at Riverside. The Riverside Crest team members are also involved in that work effort. We have our support personnel, the folks that would support a county after go-live, actually working hand-in-hand through this process as well, so that they understand what's being delivered before go-live, so that they can support it afterwards. Relative to the state of California, we are really looking at very slow managed steady growth. We are not signing up every county. We've actually walked away from some business in California because it didn't make sense. We want to make sure that we sign up the right county where we can bring the greatest value not only to that county, but also to our organization, where it's a mutual win, really looking at an integrated solution for the county. So, another thing that we do is we support the market via conference sponsorships and associate memberships. I know Steve, I believe you talked about going to the CSAC, so we have not participated in CSAC, but we do participate in the CAO conference, we participate in the assessor's conference, auditor controller, and treasurer tax collector conferences, and we do sponsor those heavily throughout the course of the year for California-specific counties. This slide is just for your reference. It really talks to the proven experience of Thompson Reuters in the market for California. There have been many failures in the state of California for property tax deployments. We are the only company to have gotten counties live in the state of California. We currently have Santa Barbara is live on the treasurer tax collector auditor controller solution, and then we have Santa Cruz is live on the completely integrated portfolio, and San Francisco is live for business revenue. So, treasure, it's like TOT tax. It's not the completely integrated property tax solution, but still nonetheless, they are also live. This has been over a decade long of us working to gather those user stories, understand the R and T code in California, make sure that we have the right staff with the right level of experience to address the R and T code complexity, and then really just consistently working through and bringing to market an innovative solution. It's dot-net browser-based, next-generation solution for the counties in California. I'm proud of the investment of time, resources, and certainly money that Thompson Reuters has put into this. No other county, no other vendor can do that or has done that in the state of California for any county, so I'm very proud of that effort. Now, I'm going to introduce Alicia Beal.
Hi, Board. It's, my name's Alicia Beal and I'm the project manager for this project. During this fiscal year, we have a lot of hard work to accomplish. It will require the efforts of each department that are standing here behind me. I have a huge group of people that have worked very hard, the assessor's office, treasurer or tax collector, and the auditor's office, and Thompson Reuters, to propel us into this next phase. Data conversion and system configuration will require our most experienced staff to dedicate a great deal of time and effort to accomplish these goals, so our system will be up and working within the parameters for go-live. They will need to offload much of their production support time to others as they move forward with implementing the new system. As you have seen, we are already developing their budgets and staffing in order to accomplish this goal. The success of the project will depend on how well we complete data conversion and configuration. One of the many things we have learned from others is the valuation and taxation process is very long and very complex. There are many variables that can cause problems, so this makes testing very challenging as a change in one area can affect any number of items downstream. So, we will be diligently working on a method to improve the user acceptance testing. As you can see, most of our budget remains intact. Our initial expenditures have mostly been spent on personnel costs and software. This has been used in data conversion and to prepare us for phase one. So, to summarize, our progress to date, we have accomplished these four bullets. And now, I'd like to ask, I'd like to present Peg back to the podium to talk to you about the additional project staff to continue our success. Please note that these positions are already accounted for in our original project budget.
So, a lot of work has gone on and I can't say enough about how important the cooperation of all the different teams here has been. We, we have worked together as one team, even though we're coming from many different departments, and also with the vendor. As part of the Amentum project's process, progress, TCICT will need to add personnel. The positions we require are two analyst twos, administrative services programmers, herein, hereafter known as programmers. The fiscal impact, TCICT requests a transfer be made from the IT project trust fund that was set up for this project to the oh-three-five oh-nine-oh fund, which is where expenses are paid out of. This is being done at no additional cost, no additional net county cost. This was all planned on in, in the project. The requested transfer aligns with organizational performance component of the county's five-year strategic business plan. In this, the department will be able to meet the organizational performance measure of continually evaluating organizational structure to improve service of delivery. Without these staff members, the project will suffer in its ability to meet deadlines and fully complete the initiatives. These staff members. These staff members are critical for the success of this project. And I thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
No, I just have a comment, Peg. I think this is outstanding. We've been looking forward to moving from our present system into this cutting-edge system, so that the tax assessor and tax collector are very prepared to do their job. So, it's a great deal.
Yeah, I was going to comment, when you say that this is a longstanding problem, it's so longstanding that it's been on the table since I've been here, so that's 18 years. And so, my question for you, Peg, is will we be live when I leave here in two years?
When you leave here, when?
Two years.
Two years? Two years? You're right on the clock.
Let's shoot for it.
We'll shoot for it. We'll give it a good try, but you're right there. That's pretty close to the timeline that we have set right now. I just can't get, give enough credit to the team that has worked on this. They have worked diligently, they've worked hard, they've worked through difficult times. These are, this is not an easy project, and the entire group just needs to be commended on the great job that they're doing.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, Peg, I see the budget, 16-plus million dollars. Is my memory just going bad? I remembered us talking about four or five million dollars for this, and maybe that was just the assessor's piece, and so I didn't see a breakdown there. Just refresh my memory. Has this budget increased at all since we started the program, because I thought it was a lot smaller?
Well, I believe the four or five million, that's just the Thomson Reuters portion of it, software portion of it. It's not the, all the hardware, it's not all personnel time, it's not having to bring people in to fill in for people who have to work on the project, so that's, but it hasn't changed. That's the budget.
I was thinking that's what it was, I just wanted to confirm that, because I remember it being smaller.
A piece of, yeah, the piece you're speaking of, the same as it was, the entire budget is the same as it was.
Okay, thanks, Chairman.
I also concur that it's about time. We found a program that was suitable for us to move forward. We still receive issues on assessments in tax rolls and, that are directed to the board. This has been going on, I'm sure, forever, but look forward. I won't be here when this takes place, but I'll be on the other end of it. But, thank you, I'm glad we're moving forward.
Thank you so much for your support. We couldn't get there without you.
Peg, I know it's a very high-dollar piece of technology, but most technology is very high-dollar anyways, but this is a great piece of infrastructure that the county will be able to depend upon for many, many years going into the future, and I think one of the most important pieces is it's a more user-friendly system, and that's going to be key, because I know there's a lot of frustration, not only for the staff that works on it, but the end-user, the consumer that interfaces with it as well, so I'm really looking forward to this.
New people that we bring in. It's, when we bring somebody new in, and we have to sit down and train them on a mainframe and system, most of these people coming in have no clue, so it's, it makes it much harder all the way around.
It's like learning an ancient language that nobody speaks any longer.
Or going to school in the 30s, 40s, and 50s like you guys, so. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Language hasn't changed that much.
Sixties.
They had a lot more common sense back then.
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval.
Move by Supervisor Worley.
Second.
Second. By Supervisor Cox, cast your votes. Vote unanimous, thank you. And thank you for the presentation, Peg. Okay, now, we will go to our timed items. We'll start with item number three, amend Chapter 15 and Part 7, Chapter 21, Part 1 of the Ordinance Code, and approve notes of exemption for said ordinance.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors, Mr. Spata and County Counsel. I'm Dennis Lehman, I'm your county building official, and I'd like to introduce the man who needs no introduction, he's, we've worked on the project together, Charlie Norman. Him and I go to lunch quite often, and it's like going to lunch with a rock star. And we have worked together several, for several years in the past. What's before you today is the tri-annual code adoption. We adopt new building codes every three years. This is my 11th time adopting codes, so you can do the math. And I have to tell you that this has been the most collaborative effort. Charlie, Chief Norman and myself have worked together with our staff. I'd like to thank Battalion Chief Jeff Smith, RMA staff Hector Ramos, and Maria Flores, but most of all, I'd like to thank Will Jackson, who helped us out with this, the legal portion of it and getting it all packaged for everybody. What we're going is going from the 2013 codes to the 2016 codes, and ironically, we're going from the blue to the red. But, what, there are a couple of new, there are, these are the body of codes that we are proposing to adopt. Last year, there were 10 codes in the 13 code. This year, there are 11 codes, and what we're adopting is the additional code of the existing building code. That is number 11, and I suspect with the events of the Oakland fire, we're going to see a lot of work being put into that code coming up here over the next couple of years, but it is adopted, it is in place, and I can see quite a few things happening with that. What I would like the board to do today is to hold a public hearing, find that there are no, and find that there are no substantial evidence that the ordinance will have no significant effect on the environment, to direct the Tulare County Environmental Officer to file a notice of exemption, to waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance, amending Chapter 15 of Part 7, and Chapter 21 of the Ordinance Code of Tulare, and direct the court of, and direct the clerk of the board to publish a summary of the ordinance and post a full copy of the complete ordinance after the adoption, as required by law. Need to go back. I went forward, I, I'm sorry, I. There's a couple of highlights of the code I'd like to just talk about here, and basically, the code's going to provide for greater life, safe fire life, safety for all newly constructed buildings. It will also provide for greater efficiency, approximately 15% in the energy code. The state of California has set a goal of net zero for all new homes constructed after 2020, and we've been on a slow march towards that, and with this 15% increase, there, there's quite a ways to go still, and that will be a part of the new code cycle. The new codes also allow for newly developed building materials and systems that just weren't in place when the prior code was there. We have continued in this code to allow for the inspection, or to require for the inspections of mobile homes greater than 10 years prior to the installation in our county. And to date, we've inspected, during the last three years, we've inspected 58 mobile homes, several of them out of county, 10 of them were rejected, and about half of the remaining went into, went to the state for permits for such as, for such repairs that the state was requiring. And with that, I'd like to enter, I'd like to bring Charlie up to talk about a couple of the items here. We've changed, we worked on the fire code, so.
Charlie, you want to take that piece? Good morning. Can you hear me now? Just reducing the need for suppression tanks at this point, we looked at that from a response standpoint, and a lot of times, looking at the fire code, although Dennis has helped me out throughout the last 15 years to educate me on what they do in the building code, everything we do is to prevent the fire, and as long as you have egress, access, and water, you're in pretty good shape nine times out of 10 in the fire code. What we've done with the previous water suppression tanks is we've reduced that, and that is all based on the amount of water we bring during our first alarm assignments. So, with us having a first alarm assignment of four pieces of equipment and water tender, it is somewhat redundant to have the excessive amount of tanks, not only aesthetically pleasing, granted, safety is our number one concern, it's not aesthetics, but this would be a reasonable expectation of safety, and to get this amount of water on scene, we're well within the limits of the code, so we're not even pressing the code, we exceed the code in what we're trying to do. So, that is the biggest change on behalf of my portion of the code.
And with that, we would like to have the board hold, open and hold a public hearing, receive feedback from the board, CAO, and public, find that there is no substantial evidence that the ordinance will have no significant effect on the environment, direct the Tulare County Environmental Officer to file a notice of exemption, waive the second reading, and direct the clerk to publish a summary.
Okay, does the board have any questions, or, yes?
Dennis, you've talked about achieving this efficiency by 2020, that was a result of AB 32, is that correct?
I, I'm not sure. I get my information through the, through the Building Standards Commission and what have you, and I know that it is a goal of the state.
And, and my only comment here is that everybody likes energy efficiency, but every time we make a change, it adds to the cost of construction.
11%.
And I'm told that to get to this energy efficiency level they're talking about by 2020, it could add as much as $35,000 to the cost of a unit of construction.
I suspect that to be so. It's 11% on the construction this year is what the documents I've read.
And I put that in the position of, when we talk about affordable housing, how do we build affordable housing when we have impact fees, school impact fees, cities and many counties have impact fees? We've had energy, this energy thing is nothing new. I built a house 23 years ago, we had to be energy calculations then. It'd cost more money then, and now, these just add more cost to the construction. Mr. Rashid and I were at a conference where they talked about building an affordable unit in Los Angeles County for affordable housing costs $500,000 to construct. We have people living on streets, and we're saying we're going to spend $500,000 for an affordable unit. There should be something in between there that makes more sense than making it so expensive that we have people living on streets because we can't build affordable housing.
Yeah, I started 35 years ago, and that was the buzzword, affordable housing, affordable housing, and I recall building houses for $35 a square foot.
Right. And so, my, I guess my point is that I understand we have to comply with state law, but you know what? I want us to drag our feet as much as we possibly can on these things, because the end result is that the consumer is spending all this money upfront to save a few pennies over the course of time because of energy efficiency. So, I'm just, I just, it really concerns me that we keep going down this track, and the state legislature passes these laws, and they pat themselves on the backseat, isn't it wonderful? We're achieving zero, we're going towards zero energy dependence or whatever it is. And they don't, and they don't recognize every step of the way costs more money, and it means there's more and more people cannot buy a home in this state. So, I, it's very frustrating to me, because they don't do this analysis of cost benefit. So, anyway, I pontificated enough.
Mr. Worley, many of the items that they're putting in, such as air conditioners and refrigeration heaters and what have you, the life cycle of the appliance isn't as long as the payback time of the savings. So, and that's where we are with it, so I concur with you 100%. My inspectors have seen the results of substandard housing out in the field as a result of people just not being able to move up, the cost is just so much.
Supervisor Cox, do you have a comment?
Just real brief, are there any gotchas in this? It seemed like in prior updates, you know, fire sprinklers were required, so you saw a whole flood of permits come in before, you know, the sprinklers were required to be put in. Are there any gotchas in this? Because I read through it, I didn't see any big gotchas, it's just the additional added cost of, for the energy efficiency. Were there any other gotchas that?
The one thing that I see is a pretty major thing, and something brand-new to me.
What was that?
Excuse me?
What was it?
It is, what's going, they're going to take attic spaces and call them semi-conditioned, whereas most of your houses, and my house as well, have all of the attic insulation laying on top of the ceiling, and you get up in the attic and it's 140 degrees. And what they're going to do now is they're going, and that's where all your ductwork lives. So, what they're going to do now is they're going to call attic space semi-conditioned space, and there will be insulation put up at the roof sheathing level, and that varies on the packages that you pick and the type of other efficiency items that you put in there. Could be anything from R4 to an R8 or an R16, I would suspect.
I mean, just, so this board knows, just the cost difference between a regular sheet of plywood that you would have on a roof and a solar, I'll call it a solar sheet of plywood is about $10 apiece, so I mean, that's, that could add, you know, thousands of dollars to the cost just for putting a high-efficient plywood on the roof.
And that will be mandated, you will also be putting foam of some type up on the roof deck.
It's becoming unreal, I agree with Supervisor.
Mr. Spata, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I think your comments are very well-received. Watching costs, making sure that there is a prudent, cost-effective administration of any regulatory program is high on the list of this board, the CAO, RMA, and other affected departments, and we are confident that our building official and now Capital Projects Manager will be an effective watchdog to ensure that the administration of these regulations will be cost-effective and sensitive to the public, so thank you.
And the, and the cost of our building just went up 11%.
I can see some real pluses, though, with the tanks, like we were discussing. I had a lot of calls on those tanks, people trying to build a house in a rural area, requiring 5,000, then 8,000, then 10,000. That's a big cost, so if we're doing away with that, that's a big plus. And the mobile homes, that's a great deal. I get a call probably once a month on somebody trying to bring an under-standard mobile home onto a piece of property and set it up. That's a good thing. Go out and check them.
We kept 10 out.
Right, and they need to be brought up to code. Okay, any more comments or anything?
Not this is a public com, it's a public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak to this issue may do so at this time. Seeing none, we will close the public comment and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I concur with Supervisor Worley in what we've been saying. It's about time we start to look at the return on investment of all these laws the legislature passes, and we've gotten to the point, the return on investment, on what they're trying to accomplish in a perfect world, is putting people out of the market to buy housing. And the sprinklers that went in, you have to look at, what are you saving? For the amount of money that everybody has to put into these new building codes, how many lives are you really saving for that amount of money? And that's a hard, cold fact, but the rate of return on investment is just, it's getting out of hand.
And what about false alarm when the sprinklers come on and destroy your furniture and your drywall? Okay, go ahead.
I'm done.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, move by Supervisor Cox. Seconded the motion. Seconded by Supervisor Vanderpool, cast your votes, vote unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation.
I didn't want to make the motion.
Okay, we'll move to item number four, public hearing to vacate a portion of excess right-ofway of Old Highway 99 north of Avenue 16, south of Early Mart.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Spata, Ms. Bells Lang. I'm Reid Chanki with Resource Management Agency. Today, I've got three separate items, we'll go through them chronologically here. They all deal with vacations of excess right-ofway. The first is south of Early Mart on Old Highway 99. Real briefly, we'll describe what the vacation is, have an opportunity if you have any questions, and then I'd request that you hold a public hearing, and I do believe that we have request orders in the audience that they may want to speak to the issues. This first one is the excess right-ofway is to be vacated on Old Highway 99, north of Avenue 16, south of Early Mart. It's currently a 90-foot-wide road section, and we're vacating 30 feet on the eastern side to result in a 60-foot ultimate right-ofway width. There's no change to the county maintain mileage system, because we are just vacating a portion of the width of the right-ofway there. Access will not be affected, I'll show you that on a map coming forward. We will reserve an easement for existing and future utilities in that alignment. We have published a notice, a public hearing, it's been mailed and posted in the newspaper. The request was submitted by Amric Bandal, who is the property owner here, and in this instance, we did receive one objection to this vacation, it was received from the adjoining property owner to the north. Here is a vicinity map on the left showing south of Early Mart, and on the right is the, the map or the survey's map showing the actual right-ofway that we're proposing to vacate here. You can see it's 30 feet along the entire frontage adjacency of 3. You can see it's 30 feet along the entire frontage adjacency of three parcels. Photos, on the right is the aerial view, showing in the yellow outline the property that we're proposing to be vacated, request to be vacated. You can see the off-ramp there from southbound 99, turning to north, and then go north on Old Highway 99. So there is some restricted access per Caltrans, right in that southern 70 or so feet. Looking north and south on those other two views, you can see that the, the road is wide there, and it'll just be narrowing that up a little bit. As I mentioned, we did receive one objection on this issue from Mr. Verk, who is the adjacent property owner. He had three primary concerns, the first being that the vacation would create an unsafe and narrow roadway for larger trucks turning into the truck stop. If you go back and look at this photo, the property to the north is a truck stop, so they do have some full-size semis pulling in there. Response to that is that the vacation would result in a 60-foot ultimate right-of-way, which is our county standard, and is appropriate for a road of this type. Second concern is that a proper traffic flow survey should be prepared before considering the request. We did review the traffic patterns and confirm that the 60-foot right-of-way would be adequate for turning movements and sight distance. There is an existing driveway on that, on Mr. Verk's property to the north, that may encroach slightly, it's right at the property line, just about where that northern yellow boundary is there, that's the driveway for the trucks, you can see in that picture to the left. But the, the 60-foot right-of-way would allow for trucks to make that turning movement in there. And we do have requirements as far as fencing goes and structures, so that sight distance won't be affected in that case. And the third concern was that an environmental impact report should be prepared, and per general rule 1506-1b3, this type of project is categorically exempt from SEQA, thus an E I R would not be. With that, I would request that, if approved, you make the findings that the Streets and Highway Code, Section 8324B, that this property we're vacationing is unnecessary for present or prospective use, there's no net cost to the county general fund, no cost to the roads fund, a general plan review has been prepared, and it's consistent with plans and policies of the county, and the environmental notice of exemption was issued. With that, request we hold a public hearing, determine the right-of-way is unnecessary, determine that the vacation is exempt, and approve the resolution, and direct the clerk of the board to cause a certified copy of the resolution to be recorded. Available for any questions, if you have any?
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, can you go back to the picture that has the yellow lines that show? Yeah, that one right there. So I'm looking at this, this letter from the property owner to the north, from their attorney, having objections, and I'm looking at this picture, and if you look at this picture, where the driveway, I'm going to assume that the piece of property to the north that does not have the vacation piece in front of it, is the property that represents this letter?
That's correct.
Okay, if you look at the turn lane as the vehicles are turning out, in and out of that property, they're on the outside of this yellow line. So I'm, I'm looking this, trying to understand, what is the objection, because even looking at the wear line on the picture, they don't cross over that, that yellow vacated piece. I mean, has that been discussed with the property owner to the north?
It was discussed with him, and I think his concern is just that if there's a fence that would protrude out there, it may affect the, the feeling of a little bit tighter turn radius there. But you're right, it looks like the truck turns.
You can't put a fence to the front property line, can you?
You can put it to the, the right-of-way, but it's required to be no less, or no taller than three and a half feet, and it has to have a 50% visibility, so you, it doesn't affect sight distance or turning in there, but you can put a fence right up to the right-of-way line.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Okay, public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak to this issue may do so at this time?
Good morning. My name's Dale Mill, and the land surveyor prepared the diagram you had looked at previously as an exhibit. Here to address the facts as far as the information that was presented, as far as the access for truck movement to the property to the north, as well as the benefit of the abandonment to the property owner, Mr. Bandal. The, Mr. Bandal's property is fairly unique in configuration, it's fairly narrow down at the bottom portion, he's looking at expanding on his land use that he has currently, and would like to develop the property, make some improvements, and it's really difficult to do so considering all the setback requirements at this time. The 30-foot that is being requested to be vacated or abandoned is currently unused as the public right-of-way. So it's really of no benefit to either the county or the property owner to the north, or Mr. Bandal also undeveloping his land. This provides an opportunity for that expansion, and, and a good restricted portion of the roadway to be focused within the paved area that's currently in place. The exhibit that, that was shown with the yellow lines really didn't identify the fact that the property owner to the north has some encroachment into Mr. Bandal's property, and his driveway is actually constructed back into the property to give the appearance of something that the turning movement actually would be affected as far as if the property line extended out to our proposed abandonment line. Typically, you would see improvement standards defining some setback from property lines, and I think they missed, at the development stage of this property, missed that concept, or the boundary actually defined properly. But I think this is a logical use of property that benefits both the county and the property owner adjacent. If you had any questions, I would be able to hopefully address some of those.
Questions?
No, thank you. Thank you for that input.
Anybody else wishing to speak to this issue during the? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the comment and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I think that this is definitely an item that makes sense, and I hope that Mr. Bandal's business will continue to expand in the future, and being mindful of the restrictions upon building fences and the visibility requirements, I don't think that this is going to interfere with the visibility and turning radius of trucks, and I would move for approval.
I'll second that.
Supervisor Vanderpool, seconded by Supervisor Cox, cast your votes, vote unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we've got item number five, vacate the excess unnamed right-of-way between Road 227 and Griswold Avenue in Lynn Cove.
The second of our three vacations, this one in the community of Lynn Cove, very similar presentation to the previous. The petition was submitted by Mr. Larry Williams, an agent for the property owner, I believe. The property in question is 60 feet in width, 312 feet in length, a little less than a half acre, between Road 227 and Griswold Avenue. This is, in fact, one of our paper roads, it's not constructed, you'll see in the photos here, it's not a maintained county road either.
It's a viable fence line, however.
There's a fence right down the middle of it, yep. Easements for utilities, existing or future, will be reserved, and property owners adjacent to the right-of-way support the vacation. Vicinity map and somewhat blurry vacation map, a little bit better here, you can see in the yellow rectangle, it's between two parcels, and then on the left is the photo of non-existent. Per Streets and Highways Code, the, we found that the property is unnecessary for present or prospective use, no net county cost, and no cost to the road fund, general plan review has found it consistent with plans and policies of the county, and the environmental notice of exemption was issued. With that, request that you hold a public hearing, determine the right-of-way is unnecessary for present or prospective use, and the vacation is in public interest. The SEQA findings have been made, approve the resolution to vacate the excess property, or the excess right-of-way, and direct the clerk of the board to record the document.
Okay, we will open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak to this issue may do so at this time?
Hello, my name is Yvonne LaFleur, and I do have a concern about this piece of property. This piece of property has the waterway drainage that goes to our community, and some of the vacations that have been given already, people not understanding the waterway have actually gotten rid of them, or attempted to, and then the water doesn't flow through the community the way that it was designed to when the community was set up. Have no problem with Mr. Williams getting the vacation, have a problem with being able to get to that ditch, and I have pictures of it if you would like to see it. That runs right along, it's actually kind of in the middle of that property if I'm understanding it right. There's a very big ditch, and that is the main artery of water that, that sheds the water through the community.
Anybody else wishing to speak to this issue? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public comment. Has any, anybody voiced a concern about that?
Mr. Chairman, I don't see a picture of a ditch, I see a fence line and an overhead, I don't see a ditch there.
Is there a ditch that runs through there? I, I don't see it.
Or is it just a depression to the right side of the picture?
I think there's a very big ditch.
From, from the aerial photograph, I'm not seeing anything, but it may, obviously ditches are not profiled.
What is he going to do with this piece of property when he gets it?
I'm not sure. I, I don't know what the.
The ditch by the trees, on the backside by the trees?
There is a, I see a drain pipe right there at the front, see, do you see, it looks like...
This looks like a drain pipe.
Oh yeah, well, there's a pipe there, but it's depressed, but there's no.
Well, it looks like the road's up higher than the property, and then there's a culvert coming in.
There's a drain pipe right there.
Yeah, I see the culvert.
So the culvert goes under Road 227, but all along that piece of property is a ditch that's probably two and a half to three feet deep. I can stand in the middle of it and it comes back to my hips. It actually turns on Griswold, goes along Griswold, goes underneath American Avenue. So the waterway, the, the way the water flows is like in a big, it's through the community. So it goes, can you go to American Avenue? Do you know which one American is?
Go ahead and use that.
This is American Avenue, this is, there is a big ditch that runs right along the side, same ditch, it goes, and then water comes from this side as well, goes underneath and goes right along Griswold, right here, so there's another big ditch. Then it goes down and it turns right here, and it goes right along, so the, the trees are on the, the north side of the ditch, goes all the way here, and there's another culvert that goes underneath this road right here at 227, goes along this way and runs on through.
Chairman, a question to staff. Is, is it possible to continue with the vacation but have some caveat in terms of, because I know the rules are, you're not allowed to change your own land so that you would create a flood problem for your neighbors, and, so, but rather than create a problem by having to come after the fact, so if he came in and leveled this property and eliminated the drainage that it now provides, then the people would have to come back and bring a suit in the event of a flood or something like that, so is there a way of dealing with that particular issue?
I believe that similar to the preservation of the utility easement, we could put a drainage easement along that as well.
It's appropriate.
I would put, put that in the wording then, that that stays in there. Okay? Okay? Any other comments on the board?
I would make approval subject to that easement.
Okay. Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Second. Seconded by Supervisor Rashida, seconded by Supervisor Worthy, cast your votes, vote unanimous.
Here's our third vacation. This is in Track 92, near Visalia. A similar presentation as the prior. Properties here are alleys with widths of 20 to 25 feet wide, total length of over, a little over 740 feet, having near a bit less than a half acre. One of these is an actual alley, so there will be some access affected, but that actual alley is creating part of the problem that is causing this request, you'll see in the photo here. No change to the county maintain mileage system, we will preserve an easement for utilities, no impact on general or roads funds. We've published the notice of hearing, and this petition was vacated, or to vacate, was submitted by Irene Lindsay, who I believe represents the, some of the community or the surrounding neighbors there. And the, the purpose is to enhance the security of the neighborhood. So here is the vicinity map, and then the red line on the right shows the, the two alleys frontage that is. Aerial photographs, it's the same property, it's looking from the north or looking from the south, so different views of the properties. Here we have some photos, you can see the, on the left, there is an existing alleyway there, and apparently they've had some security issues with noise and debris being left there, so that's the, the proposed vacation. And you can see in the other two photos, it's more of a, either private driveway or non-existing roadway there. Similar to the previous, where we found that the Streets and Highways Code, Section 8324B, pursuant to that, that these properties are unnecessary for present or prospective use, no net county cost, no cost to the roads fund, general plan review has found that it's consistent with plans and policies, and the environmental notice of exemption was issued. With that, request you open a public hearing, affirm that the right-of-way is unnecessary for present or prospective use, and the vacation is in the public interest, determine that the vacation is exempt from SEQA, approve the resolution, and direct the clerk of the board to record the resolution.
I don't see any, any utilities or anything in these alleys. Do they have easements in them, or?
I, I.
I didn't see any.
I don't believe that there are, but the, the format of this vacation does preserve the right for utilities to go in at, at a future date.
Any other comments from anyone? Okay. So there's a public hearing, anybody wishing to speak to this issue may do so at this time. Open the public hearing.
My name is Charles Dusset, I live in Track 92, I lived there for about 45 years. I went through the alley this morning, I, I know it real well. I'm on the water board, there's a water well right at the end where the lady put up the gates, she put up professional nice gates, and it's not from debris and this and that in the neighborhood, it's, it's from vandalism, they've killed her dogs, they've killed other dogs up and down the neighbor, in the alley. The, the lady lost two sons from gun violence, from noise several years ago, adult sons. She, her husband passed away, she is a good steward in the neighborhood, been there a long time, it's a security problem for her, and the gates are very professionally put in, they only go to where the existing well is. From the north side of the alley, you have plenty access, and my theory is, I have some land where I share with Edison has to come on, we put interlocking locks, and if anybody needs to go in for that well, they can, and, and it would be open for anybody that has used for it, but other than that, it's a safety problem for that lady. There's been a lot of, there's a few little hooligans in the neighborhood that they can't solve, she started a neighborhood watch program the other, not too long ago. A lieutenant came, and two gang violent guys came and put on a, a video and everything. Some of the people in there were given names, I told them they probably shouldn't be given names because the other people are in that room and they're going to do violent to them later, or, or chastise them for it. And sure enough, I made sure that I gave one name to those two gang task people outside, and he put it on a deal, and before the sun went down that day, one of those three officers went to the people's house that the names were given to and told them who gave the names. And that lady has a real concern about her safety, there's another lady in my neighborhood, 70-some years old, she just had to get a gun because she's very scared too, and the, the senior citizens in that neighborhood shouldn't have to be buying guns for that kind of thing, and it's a security deal for this lady, and it causes no harm to the neighborhood, and it's very well done, and I'd hope that you guys would please vote in favor of her. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Anybody else?
Good morning. My name's Monroe Self. I'm the president of the board, Track 92 Community Service District, and we oppose this in the fact that we move trucks through there to work on our wells. We have a pipeline running through there. Problems of the nature he was just speaking about are not just in that area, they're in the subdivision. And so, we have some people that access their property from the alleyway. We serve all of those properties adjacent to the alley up next to Road 148 for water through that system. We're currently in the process of trying to get a, get funds to rebuild our system. Our system was built in about '61, '62. And so, we've been working with the state. If you close that alley off, if you get too many keys out there, your security is gone. Now, it can be gone too, of course, with bolt cutters, and we understand that. However, we would oppose you closing that because we have semi-trucks that come through there from time to time to work on our equipment. In the last two to three years, we've replaced a pump, the complete well, not drilling a new well, but dropping the bowls down so that we can pull more water from deeper. And so, we need the access and the right-of-way to stay open so that we can get the equipment in there. I carry a key to that compound, as does the board members. Currently, the Edison Company has a key to it. Now, for our purposes, we need that alley to stay open. The fencing, gates, and what have you were put in there. They've never been locked, but it's been a public right-of-way for a long time, even though it's an easement. It's been open. I recommend that you refuse to change that.
Just a quick response to that, because the reservation, there is a reservation for easements in the vacation, so you will still have access. The difference is that when it's a public way, there's no ability to actually fence off the alleyway. But with a fence, you can keep the general public from just traversing back and forth through the alley and to still protect what you need, which is the access to provide your services. So, I think it can be accomplished both ways. Provide some security to the people and provide you with the access that you need.
May I make a suggestion? Fence it at both ends and leave it in the direction of the water board.
Well, you will have, you'll need the access, so the fencing, I'll let Reed talk to that, but I think that can be accommodated. Because whoever puts a fence up there, whether it was you or the property owner that the property is vacated to, has to allow you to have access to your easement.
Well, if you don't, we're landlocked.
Why I ask that question is the utilities in there, because that...
I'm sorry, I cannot hear you.
That is why I asked that question about utilities, because if there's utilities in there, there's an easement that goes well.
Well, with that, I'll leave you to your decisions. Hope you can find the right way.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Anybody else wishing to speak to this issue?
She's asked that I show the map here for her.
Do you see this white tank there? That's the tank for the water company.
Yeah, I hear you.
Do you see the white area right there? That is the water tank. This is the water company site, the CSD site. This is open all the way over to Oscar. So, that is their normal access. We are not interfering at all with the water company. The water company is currently looking to get a state grant for another site for that water well, and they will be abandoning all, they'll be abandoning the well, they'll be abandoning, abandoning all of the water piping. So, you know, that's what they're doing right now with self-help. So, anyway, I did want to say that we do get problems. We do get graffiti. This is a swastika, and I don't know what that is. It's an unattractive person.
We definitely can't see it from here. We definitely cannot see that from here.
Can you pass it around? This is on the back of the shop, and the shop is... Oh, I'm Irene Lindsey, 27478, Road 148. Hi, guys. I know some of you from Quay Oaks. But anyway, this is water, and Oscar runs over here. But our shop is right here, and that's where those graffitis are. It parallels the alley. So, they have killed my dogs with poison. Now, it's not just me, it's everybody is getting hurt there, but they're throwing it over the fence on the alley. We want to reduce the trash, late-night loitering, ATV and off-road vehicle dirt bikes racing through the dirt alley, which is illegal, but you know, you can't stop these people. They're having fun, you know? Also, there's, we're hiding places, late-night arguments, drug activity, they drop dogs off, and mine is the only driveway that is an active driveway. See my RV there? This driveway goes all the way from the alley to Road 148. And I don't see my timer. Am I over? But anyway, I have paid the fee. I have talked to many of the property owners, and it's like it's split from north to south. Again, it's the Civil War. But anyway, there's different family groups that have been there for a long time, and they don't like change. But anyway, I hope you'll approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak to this issue? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Sure. One thing, in a broader context, I can recall when this was an issue brought to my attention some time ago in Cutler and Nerosi, where we have a lot of these alleys, and they have common problems like this. And I guess I was thinking about, as we're looking at our general plan updates for these urbanized communities, this would be a good topic to take up, because in many cases, these are, these are, again, non-maintained, they belong to the county, but we're not maintaining them. They're horrible in terms of trash and graffiti and the problems of security that were just mentioned. And I mean, I think, I think it'd be a great policy for us to look at trying to vacate as many as we possibly can across the county. And at the time, the issue is how do you do it other than individual attempts such as this, to try to make it more cost-effective and efficient? So, anyway, I bring that up, but I would be glad to move with the approval of this item. Again, with the reservation of all pertinent easements for access for the utility companies.
Mr. Chair, and I think that your comment is very well said in that this is a very important piece for security for this neighborhood, but the access is really important. We have to make sure that access by the utility companies, as well as the CSD, is preserved should this be vacated, and as long as that is the case, I'm in favor of seconding that motion.
Yes. We had this issue in Plainview, but we did have a water line running down the alleys. And as we replumb Plainview, we moved the water lines out in front of the homes and vacated the alleys. There's definitely a security issue with all our areas that have these alleys, and once you vacate the public access, it seems to dissipate the problems that we have. But also, the people who will gain ownership on the vacation needs to understand, they cannot impede a public utility from using that access. So, then also, I'm looking at a couple of these photographs, and it appears that on two of them, the, or right-of-way's been already, yeah, has already been infringed on. But alleys do, do have a definite security issue, and I would agree with the motion.
Okay, moved by Supervisor Worthy, second by Supervisor Vanderpool. Cast your votes. Vote unanimous. Okay, we will move to item number seven. The matter before the board of supervisors, item seven, is the public hearing to consider adoption of an urgency interim zoning ordinance prohibiting all commercial, non-medical marijuana activity in the unincorporated areas of the county. Prohibiting outdoor, non-medical marijuana cultivation on private residents in the unincorporated areas of the county, and prohibiting indoor cultivation of non-medical marijuana in the unincorporated areas of the county, except indoor cultivation that complies with certain reasonable regulations. Government Code, Section 65, 858, this interim ordinance requires four-fifths vote. If passed, it will be effective immediately and will be effective for 45 days unless further extension of the board after notice of public hearing. To consider this ordinance, this public hearing has noticed staff has prepared a presentation for the board. After opening the public hearing and taking staff's presentation, we will take public comment on this matter. After the staff presentation, any interested party will be allowed three minutes to speak to the board. The only exception to this limit will be at the sole discretion of the chairman. All written materials submitted during the public hearing should be handed directly to the clerk of the board and not to the board members. The clerk will appropriately distribute the materials to the board. As mentioned earlier, the supervisors will have the opportunity to review all written materials before the supervisors deliberate and reach a decision on the proposed action. Any materials, including documents, pictures, submitted will become public records and must be retained by the county. Please note that the submitted materials speak for themselves. If you wish to submit materials to the board but also want to retain a copy and have not made copies, you may submit the materials and obtain copies from the clerk of the board at a later date. Once the floor is open to public comment, we ask that individuals wishing to comment approach the podiums one at a time and speak directly into the microphone, giving your name and address up for record. Please remember to check the timer in the right-hand portion of the overhead screen visible to the public for the amount of time you have remaining during this statement. Please address all questions to me, the chairman, instead of the individual board supervisors, county staff, or any members of the public. If appropriate, we will ask for any responses to be, we believe, needed. Okay, after the conclusion of the staff presentation and public comments, then the public hearing will be closed. So, ahead, Ben, and open the presentation.
Good morning, Chairman, Board Members, CAO, County Council, Ben Reese, Director of Resource Management Agency. And the item before you this morning is a proposed interim ordinance on recreational marijuana. This presentation will be a collaborative effort between Tulare County RMA, Sheriff's Department, and the Fire Department. Just a brief overview of the presentation, I will start out by giving you some brief background and introductory comments. We'll go over the threats to public safety, health, and welfare posed by marijuana. I will go over some of the environmental considerations. Mike Grove, our code compliance officer at RMA, will go over some of the enforcement issues. Detective Tim Johnson from Tulare County Sheriff's Department will go over some of the criminal issues that we face, and Chief Charlie Norman will go over some of the fire threats posed by the cultivation of marijuana. I will summarize as well the proposed action, what the interim ordinance will do. Our chief environmental planner, Hector Guerra, will go over the SEQA analysis and determinations for this interim ordinance, and then I'll summarize the requests, go over the acknowledgements, and then staff will be available for comments or any questions that you may have. So, in this last, in this calendar year, there's been some significant changes to state laws governing marijuana. The Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act became effective January 1st of 2016. This set in place a regulatory framework and licensing for the cultivation of medical marijuana, including some commercial activities. This act did allow for local government to have control, and therefore, your board put in place some interim ordinances a couple of months ago, prohibiting commercial medical marijuana, and putting some moratorium on the expansion of any existing medical marijuana entities, and the establishment of any new medical marijuana entities. On November 8th, so a little bit more recently, Proposition 64, the Control, Regulate, and Tax Adult Use of Marijuana Act, was passed by California voters. So, Proposition 64, among other things, decriminalizes under state law possession, use, transport, and purchase of limited amounts of non-medical marijuana for adults 21 years of age and older. It decriminalizes under state law planting, cultivation, harvesting, drying, and processing of up to six marijuana plants in or upon the grounds of a private residence. It establishes a comprehensive system to regulate commercial, non-medical marijuana However, the county may regulate non-medical marijuana. Proposition 64 expressly acknowledges a local jurisdiction's ability to enact regulations of non-medical marijuana, including reasonable regulations that reasonably regulate indoor cultivation activities. It allows for local government to prohibit outdoor cultivation activities upon the grounds of a private residence. It allows for prohibition or restrictions on marijuana activities within a building owned, leased, or occupied by the local government agency. Additionally, Proposition 64 allows for the prohibition on the establishment or operation of one or more types of marijuana businesses within its jurisdiction. It allows for local ordinances to regulate non-medical marijuana businesses, including, but not limited to, local zoning and land use requirements, business license requirements, and requirements related to reducing, reducing exposure to secondhand smoke. Just a note, Tulare County voters rejected Proposition 64. Fifty-five percent of the county of Tulare voters voted no on Prop 64. Additionally, the county gets its ability or police powers to regulate recreational marijuana from Article 11, Section 7 of the Constitution, which allows the county to adopt and enforce ordinances and regulations not in conflict with general laws to protect and promote the public health, safety, and welfare of its citizens. There are existing regulations regarding marijuana in Tulare County. They're related to medical marijuana. Part 6, Chapter 11, and Part, Part 5, Chapter 11, and Part 6, Chapter 21 of the Tulare County Ordinance Code provide for regulations of medical marijuana, as does Section 15.3 of the zoning ordinance. Ordinance Number 3498, an interim ordinance which was adopted by your board a couple of months ago, prohibits the establishment or expansion of commercial cannabis entities post-Merxza. However, there are no county regulations specific to non-medical marijuana in place. There is a continued disconnect with federal law. So, despite the changes in state law, the federal government has not sanctioned non-medical marijuana in any way. The Controlled Substances Act classifies marijuana as a Schedule I drug, which means it's unlawful to cultivate, manufacture, distribute, or dispense marijuana, or possess marijuana with the intent to do such. In August of this year, the Drug Enforcement Administration announced that marijuana would remain a Schedule I substance under the Controlled Substances Act. As such, there's potential conflicts for the county as it attempts to determine what laws and regulations should apply to non-medical marijuana in California. So, now, that's kind of an overview of the laws that are in place, state laws and federal laws. We'll start going over some of the threats that we believe are, will be for, towards the public safety, health, and welfare. I'll go over some of the environmental considerations. Mike Grove, our code compliance officer, will talk about some of the civil and code compliance issues that he faces. Detective Tim Johnson will go over some of the sheriff's department's concerns, and our chief, Charlie Norman, will go over some of the fire-related. So, Tulare County and numerous other California counties and cities have noted that the cultivation, processing, or distribution of marijuana has been associated with serious harmful effects in the areas where such activities are located, both to the owners of property in such areas and to the people living, visiting, conducting business, or otherwise present in the area. Some of the harmful effects... Some of the harmful effects related to marijuana include an increase in criminal activity because of the high monetary value of the marijuana plants, including illegal sales and distribution of marijuana, trespassing, theft, home invasions, violent robberies, and robbery attempts, fire dangers from grow light systems and marijuana oil extraction operations. You'll see some evidence of electricity theft here in Tulare County, excessive energy consumption, adverse environmental impacts, noise pollution from generators, strong offensive odors, adverse impacts related to farming practices, and just in general disturbing the peace. The U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration reports that marijuana cultivation associated with illegally diverted water and illegally deforestation and soil contamination has an adverse effect on our environment. For example, rodenticides and insecticides that are frequently discovered at the cultivation sites have a detrimental impact on some of our wildlife. Additionally, marijuana plants require lots of water. As you know, here in Tulare County, we're dealing with the serious effects of the drought. A single marijuana plant will use approximately six to eight gallons of water per day to thrive, and you'll see how there's been abuse of some of the water that's been used for our drought-impacted areas to cultivate marijuana. Some additional environmental concerns. A recent study by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife shows that water demand for marijuana cultivation and for the potential to divert excessive amounts of water has a harmful effect on federally listed salmon and steelhead trout. The water demand associated with marijuana cultivation and its biological impacts also is of particular concern here in Tulare County, which has known water supply constraints, and state and federally listed species that could be affected by such water use, such as some amphibians, for example, our tiger, our California tiger salamander that could be impacted by this. In addition to the aquatic species, there are numerous species in Tulare County that could be harmed by pesticides, herbicides, and fertilizer use. For example, California Department of Fish and Wildlife's report to fish and game indicates that fishers in California are frequently exposed to and sometimes killed by rodenticides. Large amounts of pesticides, including anticoagulants, rodenticides, have been found in recent years at illegal marijuana cultivation sites on public, private, and tribal forest lands. And this slide shows some of the species that are, some of the, some of the species that are threatened, some of them are endangered species or species of special concern, but others are just common. For example, we have a list here, the bald eagle, the California condor, the golden eagle, Swanson's hawk, are all species that are impacted by illegal marijuana cultivation sites. And as you know, we're in the fifth year of historic drought here in Tulare County. Many of the county, many county homes are without water and receive emergency bottled water assistance, but there is some abuse. This is a photo taken in Seville by our Code Compliance Officer Mike Grove, and what this shows here is a supply of the emergency bottled water that we've been supplying to some folks in Seville that are without water, but it was a photo taken at a marijuana eradication site, so the water was being used to cultivate marijuana. Another photo basically showing the same thing, some of the water, emergency bottled water being delivered, but you can see clearly here that it's being used for the cultivation of marijuana. So now I'll turn it over to Mike Grove, who'll talk over some of our Code Compliance threats.
Michael Grove with RMA and Code Compliance. Proposition sixty-four provides that for the purposes of issuing licenses for cultivation, marijuana is now an agricultural product. The county's current agricultural land use zones permits the production of field crops, fruit and nut trees, vines, vegetables, horticultural specialties, timber, and the operation of plant nurseries and greenhouses for producing trees, vines, and other horticultural stock without the need for a use permit. Many of these same items can be also cultivated in a residential zone without a permit. However, the current county land use regulations related to crop production did not contemplate the possibility of non-medical marijuana as a permissible agricultural or horticultural Current reg, excuse me, current regulations do not adequately address the unique legal land use, environmental, and public health, safety, and welfare issues and impacts associated The county, Tulare County, has already received inquiries from individuals seeking to obtain licenses for commercial, non-medical marijuana operations within the unincorporated, incorporated areas of Tulare County. Given the unique issues related to marijuana activities, such as it is still a federal crime, there is environmental degradation, strong odors that are generally present, the approval of use permits, variances, building permits, and any other applicable entitlement for use for non-medical marijuana activities before the county has adequate regulation in place would result in a threat to public health, safety, or welfare. In addition, based on the Tulare County's experiences with medical marijuana, county staff anticipates that some individuals may choose to begin commercial, non-medical marijuana activities in the county before receiving a state license or any type of license. If this occurs, some commercial, non-medical marijuana uses may become established in the county prior to the establishment of zoning business and other health and safety regulations under the normal planning and zoning processes of the county. As far as illegal remodels go, related to marijuana growth, growers often remodel their residences or buildings to cultivate marijuana indoors. May involve, or generally is involved with electrical work that's to support indoor grow lights, which can create a lot of fire hazards because it's not constructed correctly. These illegal remodels are extremely dangerous. They're not necessarily conducted per the building code, and they're not inspected by any certified building inspector. This may also occur with non-medical marijuana. Earlier in two thousand and sixteen, RMA found evidence of entrepreneurs moving forward with new commercial cannabis activities without licenses. At least two different buildings intended for marijuana activities were being remodeled without permits. Persons conducting remodels admitted to Code Compliance that the buildings were intended for either marijuana dispensaries, collective cultivation sites, or some combination thereof. And at that time, I'll, or at this time, I'll turn it over to Detective Tim Johnson.
Good morning. Detective Tim Johnson with the Tulare County Sheriff's Department. I just want to go over some criminal threats still associated with marijuana and the cultivation of marijuana. So Proposition sixty-four will have an effect on criminal prosecutions. That effect is yet to be determined. An interim ordinance will be an effective tool that will assist the Sheriff's Department in addressing the uncertainty related to criminal prosecutions under Proposition sixty-four. Unregulated marijuana presents criminal threats. Some of these include that marijuana is still illegal in much of the country, and under federal law, it is not easily grown in all parts of the United States. Black market, black market production and sales, and the illegal processing of marijuana, which includes honey oil labs. Also thefts, robberies, potential violent crimes related to marijuana cultivation and distribution activities. Each marijuana plant, under various planting conditions, may yield over two pounds of dried usable marijuana in its lifetime. Prices for domestically produced high-grade cannabis sold in California can reach a value of two hundred and forty dollars per ounce on the black market or more. Thus, a single marijuana plant has the potential to yield over seven thousand dollars in sellable marijuana in a retail environment. As marijuana plants begin to flower, and for a period of two or more months each growing cycle, the plants produce a strong, unique, and often offensive odor to many people and detectable far beyond property boundaries if grown outdoors. Odor may alert persons to the location of marijuana, and because of the continued black market value of these plants, may increase the risk of burglary, robbery, or armed robbery where plants are known to be cultivated and stored. Cash from marijuana sales cannot be deposited in a federally insured, regulated bank. Those involved with marijuana commercial activities often have large amounts of cash on hand. The California Attorney General's August two thousand and eight Guidelines for the Security and Non-Divergent of Cannabis Grown for Medical Use recognized that the cultivation or other concentration of cannabis in any location or premises without adequate security increases the risk that surrounding homes and businesses may be negatively impacted by nuisance activities such as loitering or crime. Some of our Sheriff's Department additional concerns, there's continued doubts that the decriminalization of commercial marijuana activities, medical or non-medical, will reduce the demand for black market cannabis products or the illegal cultivation of cannabis in the county. Not all geographic regions are suited for cannabis cultivation, and cannabis may still be illegally cultivated in the county to meet demand in markets outside of California. Taxation and regulation may cause price for marijuana to increase, pushing some purchasers to the black market. This image here is a traffic stop that was conducted in June of two thousand and six where deputies located a large sum of prepackaged marijuana in a vehicle. The next image here shows that, that prepackaged marijuana that was removed from the vehicle. In total, we recovered a hundred and eleven separate prepackaged one-pound bags of marijuana during that traffic stop. So the increase in number of marijuana grows criminally eradicated. Although amount of marijuana seized or eradicated varies, over the past four years, the Sheriff's Department has eradicated increasing number of grow sites each year, both on the valley floor and in the mountain areas. This next graphic shows the plants or total sites eradicated during our fiscal year. Two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and fourteen, we eradicated a hundred and sixty-nine. In two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and fifteen, we had a total of a hundred and eighty-nine. And then finally, in two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen, we had a total of two hundred and nine grow sites criminally eradicated. As you can see, each year, there's a steady increase. Furthermore, the Sheriff's Department continues to find that large sophisticated drug trafficking organizations, or DTOs, most notably the Zetas and Gulf Cartels, are increasing operations in the Central Valley under the guise of California medical marijuana laws. They are responsible for the most large valley grows, and they also coordinate sophisticated networks of backyard and indoor grows involving multiple grow sites with different recommendation holders at each location. In most cases, recommendation holders are solicited by the DTOs but are unaware where the grow site is or who the DTO is. Non-commercial marijuana cultivation has the potential to be similarly abused now that decriminalization under current California law. Firearms and marijuana, due to the amount of, due to the value of the marijuana, firearms are commonly used to deter, defend marijuana plants, and cash from the sale of marijuana also from theft. About one-third of the weapons recovered in two thousand and fifteen were reported either lost or stolen. In two thousand and sixteen, we have two confirmed homicides which are related to marijuana. This image here depicts items commonly located during criminal investigations. On the right-hand corner of the screen, you can see weapons, including rifles and handguns and extended-capacity magazines. The lower-left-hand corner shows large amounts of marijuana, and then towards the top of the screen, you see the finished product, which is prepackaged marijuana for sales. Honey oil. The Sheriff's Department concerns about recent increase in honey oil laboratories in the county. Manufacturing honey oil is extremely dangerous. Honey oil is commonly manufactured using a solvent like butane to chemically extract the tetrahydrocannabinol, or THC, from the marijuana plant. Most solvents are flammable, leading to explosions and other fire incidences. In two thousand and fourteen, there was forty-nine confirmed explosions at marijuana extraction labs nationwide. Thirty-one of those were in Colorado and eighteen in other states. No manufacturing concentrated cannabis without a commercial license while using chemicals like solvents will continue to be illegal under Proposition sixty-four. Honey oil remains an extremely valuable commodity. There are currently no retail locations where consumers can legally purchase concentrated cannabis for recreational use because such locations must have licenses, and state, and the state has not begun to issue those licenses such for distribution. More dried marijuana will be available to individuals who may be inclined to attempt to manufacture honey oil extraction illegally. This image here depicts equipment commonly used for honey oil extraction or concentrated cannabis. The tubes in the center of the image are filled with marijuana plant material, and then butane is pushed through those, those tubes, and what comes out is a finished product. In the lower right-hand corner in that glass dish, that tar-looking substance is the actual honey oil. Again, this process is extremely dangerous. This is more equipment that we located that is associated with honey oil. There's a vacuum chamber, and also, if you look, there's a butane torch. This is not commonly used in the manufacturing, but more in the ingesting of honey oil, and commonly, we often find these heat sources in the same area as the extractions area, which is extremely dangerous. But we've seen a significant number of honey oil labs in the county. In two thousand and fifteen, we investigated six separate labs. In two thousand and sixteen, so far, we've investigated five separate investigations. Another concern we deal with is child endangerment. In this photo, it depicts a child's PlayStation, which we located in the middle of a marijuana grow. On the left-hand side of the photograph, you could see a bag which contained fertilizer in powder form. It's not beyond the realm of possibility that this powder form of fertilizer could become airborne and ingested by children in the area. Marijuana cultivation and honey oil labs most frequently occurred in households where children are present, thereby endangering those children. Highly toxic fertilizers and pesticides are sometimes used in the cultivation of marijuana. Children may access treated plants or chemicals themselves. Fumes, explosions, and access to potent honey oil extracts can cause great bodily injury or possibly death in young children. This picture here was an outdoor grow that we eradicated. Reason we included it, the fertilizers shown here have, the labeling is brightly colored, it has a cartoon, cartoonish-like character on it, and the actual name of the fertilizer is called Jungle Juice. Now, it's not beyond the realm of possibilities that a young child seeing this can confuse it possibly for a juice product and possibly ingest these harmful chemicals. This is also a common antifungal herbicide that we've, we find at grow sites, and again, due to the brightly colored blue, a child that came across this could possibly confuse this with possibly something that they could ingest. A significant number of suspected child endangerment cases related to cultivation process- processing, manufacturing, and distribution of marijuana. In 2015, we investigated 18 separate incidences of child endangerment. This year, there's been seven separate incidences here to date. The Sheriff's Department has received several reports regarding marijuana cultivators stealing power by tapping into electricity before the meter. Indoor grows use electric lights, fans, and air conditionings, and these bills can, these electric bills are sometimes very costly. Majority of indoor marijuana grows investigated by the Sheriff's Department in 2016 was later determined to be stealing power. Initial estimates suggest that the, in the first half of 2016 alone, over $300,000 in unreported power usage attributed to indoor marijuana grows. So this image here depicts a theft of power. What has happened is the suspects have illegally spliced into the meter, and this is a crude example of that splicing. The technician that assisted us on this investigation determined that these wires had arced at some point, and that this was an extreme fire hazard. And with that, I will hand this over to Chief Charlie Norman.
In continuation of some of the fire hazards on this, many fires are classified as undetermined just due to the extensive amount of damage. It's easy to find the areas of origin, it's much more difficult to find the cause, so with our two documented incidents, there's much likely to be many more throughout the county. Electrical fire hazards, the majority of the fires we see out in the field that are investigated are due to overconsumption of electricity. The systems are not designed, the wiring's not designed to hold this type of load, the panels aren't, and then the spliced electricity. Some of the modifications are made to support indoor grows, you have the equivalency of a single-family residential structure being outfitted to an institutional-type occupancy. And it, it simply amazes me that we don't have more people out there with the technical expertise that are getting electrocuted when stealing this power. And also, the honey oil laboratory explosions. One of our big incidents was in the Badger area in August 14, 2015. Large explosion before the fire was just happening in the evening. Structure was completely consumed. We had two victims relative to that. The male victim had second and third-degree burns, and was airlifted to Fresno to receive treatment for his injuries, and the female victim suffered some minor smoke inhalation burns and chemical burns. With that fire, and it was determined by the investigator that was a honey oil extraction operation that contributed to the explosion, and as you look at these, when you have butane, butane has a similar property, vapor density is propane, so it's much heavier than air. So whereas natural gas, you can go into a structure, open the windows, vent it properly, it'll dissipate, these will find low-lying areas that will create significant hazards for occupants as well as first responders. This was evidenced by canisters, and I will show you a few of these pictures, and extraction tubes found at the scene. Completely consumed, and with the Badger area, with our tree mortality happening in the middle of summer, we had a potential for a significant urban interface wildland event, so the hazards are not just with the responders, with the occupants, they're with larger urban interface areas. And again, more of the consumed structure. Our butane canisters, several butane canisters, again, with the vapor density, the hazards of that gas are very similar to propane, and right directly in the area of origin of the fire. Cooking stove, which is used to extract the items. Minimal butane vapor, static electricity can cause these, a light switch, any type of rubbing your feet on the carpet. Explosions can result in severe burns, injuries, and pose danger to neighbors, so it's not just the resident occupancy, it's urban interface area, it's the house next door to you. Hazers vapors used in the extraction process can cause, we worry about secondary devices as first responders. An additional danger to responders, displacement of roof joists, load-bearing walls. We had a structure fire in Exeter and the Spruce in Avenue 256 area. Residence was completely destroyed due to the amount of damage. We didn't have a, we had a probable cause, but not an exact item that we could testify to. We had multiple marijuana plants that were found at the scene, and electrical splice wiring appeared to be the area of origin. And when you look at these fires and investigate them, you don't go in and go, okay, we've got an electrical fire here. You rule out all your accidentals, you rule out your incendiary devices, you rule out any causes that lead you to it. So it's an elimination of facts rather than improvement of facts. So this was, we cannot confirm, and again, cannot go to court and testify to this, but it is highly likely that this was caused by an indoor electrical grow. And it would entertain any fire hazard question. I'll turn it back over to Ben.
Questions from the board?
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, based on the information presented by staff this morning, the information in your agenda item and in the draft interim ordinance, staff believes that non-regulated, non-medical marijuana could pose a serious threat to the welfare, safety of the public in Tulare County. As such, we're proposing this interim ordinance. The county authority is given through Government Code Section 6585AB, which allows the county to adopt an interim ordinance to protect the public safety, health, and welfare of its, its citizens. A four-fifth vote is required to adopt the interim ordinance. What would this new interim ordinance do? Well, it would protect the public health, safety, and welfare of Tulare County residents by prohibiting all commercial, non-medical marijuana activity in, in the unincorporated areas of the county. This would apply to pending and future applications. It would also prohibit outdoor, non-medical marijuana cultivation on private residences in the unincorporated areas of the county. Additionally, the ordinance would prohibit the indoor cultivation of non-medical marijuana in the unincorporated areas of the county, except for indoor cultivation that complies with certain reasonable regulations. With the new interim ordinance, there will be no applications, no applications for a building permit, conditional use permit, business license, or other entitlement authorizing the establishment, operation, maintenance, development, or construction of any use. In conflict with this ordinance shall be processed or approved. Regarding the indoor cultivation, these next few slides will cover the proposed regulations. Number one, the indoor cultivation of non-medical marijuana shall only be conducted within a private residence, or within a fully enclosed and secure structure on the grounds of the private residence. Number two, non-medical marijuana cultivation shall be limited to six marijuana plants per private residence, regardless of whether the marijuana is cultivated inside the private residence, in a fully enclosed and secure accessory structure located upon the grounds of a private residence, or some, some combination thereof. The limit of six plants per private residence shall apply regardless of how many individuals reside at the private residence. Number three, adequate mechanical locking or electronic security systems must be installed as part of the fully enclosed and secure structure where non-medical marijuana is cultivated prior to the commencement of cultivation. Number four, from a public right-of-way, there shall be no exterior evidence of non-medical marijuana cultivation occurring on the parcel. Number five, a fully enclosed and secure structure used for the cultivation of non-medical marijuana that is an accessory structure on the grounds of the private residence shall be located in the rear yard area of the parcel. This provision shall not apply to cultivation occurring in a garage. Number six, indoor grow lights shall comply with the California Building Code, Electrical and Fire Codes as adopted by the county. Number seven, the non-medical marijuana cultivation area, whether in a fully enclosed and secure accessory structure or inside a private residence, shall not be accessible to persons under 21 years of age. Number eight, written consent of the property owner to cultivate non-medical marijuana within the private residence, or in a fully enclosed and secure structure on the grounds of the private residence, shall be obtained and shall be kept on the premises and available for inspection by the sheriff or his or her designee and any county code inspectors. Number nine, a portable fire extinguisher that complies with the regulations and standards adopted by the state fire marshal and applicable law shall be kept in the fully enclosed and secure structure used for cultivation of non-medical marijuana. If cultivation occurs in a private residence, the portable fire extinguisher shall be kept in the same room as where the cultivation occurs. And number 10, well, number 10, all indoor, all indoor cultivation of non-medical marijuana and the structures in which the cultivation occurs must be in compliance with this ordinance, any other applicable county ordinance, and with applicable state law. Number 11, any marijuana cultivation that exceeds the limits set forth in this subsection is hereby declared to be unlawful and a public nuisance. So how do these indoor regulations reasonably address the threats? The regulations are commonsense, easy to implement, and low-cost limitations that are intended to deter crime, reduce possible child endangerment, reduce fire hazards, protect property rights and property values, prevent inappropriate uses from becoming established in areas before adequate regulations are developed. These regulations do not unreasonably restrict access to marijuana under Proposition 64. Additionally, prohibition on outdoor and commercial, non-medical marijuana activities attempts to reduce criminal threats, fire hazards, nuisance odor issues, and environmental threats, some of the threats that we discussed previously. And this is especially important to reduce these threats before county staff can study the impacts of non-medical marijuana and what those impacts will be on the county. This interim ordinance will be initially in place for 45 days. It may be extended, additional 22 months and 15 days with an additional public hearing. This will allow county time, county staff time to research, investigate, and potentially develop, amend, or create a policy for the unincorporated areas of the county. This interim ordinance has no effect on the medical marijuana regulations. Interim ordinance number 3498 and any non-conflicting code provisions shall remain in place, so all the medical marijuana regulations shall remain in effect. Penalties, violations of the interim ordinance will be considered a public nuisance, subject to abatement pursuant to chap, to Part IV, Chapter 1 of the Tulare County Ordinance Code. It will be considered a misdemeanor punishable by fine up to $1,000 or imprisonment, up to six months, or by both. Each and every day is a separate and distinct violation. Additionally, there are civil remedies under Part 1, Chapter 23 of the Ordinance Code, and also, there's penalties as provided by statute, ordinance, or, or other laws. With that, I'll turn it over to our Chief Environmental Planner, Hector Garrett, to go over the SEQA analysis and determinations.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Boards of Supervisor, Council, CIO. I'm Hector Garrett, the Chief Environmental Planner of RMA. As you've heard this introduction, there are many reasons why it's easy enough for us, and I say easy in that we do a secret determination, that's California Environmental Equality Act. The three that we have determined as the lead agency that apply to this particular project slash activity is enlisted in order, and I'll go over each of one of these exemptions individually. The non-project exemption, which is 14 California Code of Regulations at Section 15378, the general rule exemption, which is at 14 California Code of Regulations, Section 15061B3, and the Class 8 14 California Code of Regulations at Section 15308, actions by regulatory agencies for the protection of the environment. The non-project exemption, this activity is not a project as defined by SEQA, because the action does not have the potential for resulting in either direct physical change in the environment, or a reasonably foreseeable indirect physical change in the environment. Before the passage of Proposition 64 on November 8, 2016, there were no permissible non-medical marijuana uses established in the county, and which will be impacted by this interim ordinance. The non-project exemption, since Proposition 64 was passed on November 8, 2016, no permits or land use entitlements issued to any business for the purpose of engaging in non-medical marijuana activities. Thus, no change in the number of businesses lawfully engaged in such activities, and no possibility that this would result in a physical change in the environment. And that's one of the prevailing thoughts of SEQA. Is there physical change in the environment? No, there isn't, not by the implementation of this interim ordinance. Furthermore, by prohibiting outdoor cultivation at private residences, not creating any requirements on indoor cultivation that would affect the environment, no direct or indirect physical changes would occur in the environment. The general rule exemption is essentially determining that there is no possibility that the activity in question, that is adoption of the interim ordinance, may have a significant effect on, effect on the environment. Again, there were no new building permits, no occupancy permits, licenses, or other land use entitlements for commercial activities. There will be no outdoor cultivation. Individuals are not prohibited from growing indoors in limited amounts in compliance with Prop 64 limitations. The same amount of marijuana may be cultivated under Prop 64 before and after county regulations. There's no need to drive out of the county, and there's no increase to vehicle emissions. The Class 8 exemption applies to actions that are taken by regulatory agencies as authorized by the state or local ordinance to assure the maintenance, restoration, enhancement, or protection of the environment where the regulatory process involves procedures for protection of the environment. So we read that the county is given that authority to develop regulation, so the county is making that effort using the interim ordinance until their, I guess, all the guidelines and regulations and processes are established. The Class 8 exemption of Prop 64, as it applies to Prop 64, intends to take non-medical marijuana production and sales out of the hands of the illegal market and bring them under a regulatory structure that protects public safety, health, and the environment, and that can be found at Prop 64 in Section 38. Furthermore, Prop 64's findings and declarations note that currently, illegal marijuana growers steal and divert millions of gallons of water without any accountability. The Adult Use of Marijuana Act will create strict environmental regulations to ensure that the marijuana is grown efficiently and legally, to regulate the use of pesticides to prevent wasting water and to minimize water usage. The Adult Use of Medical Marijuana Act will crack down on the illegal use of water and punish bad actors, while providing funds to restore lands that have been damaged by illegal marijuana grows. If a business does not demonstrate that they are in full compliance with the applicable water usage and environmental laws, they will have their licenses revoked. Also, for the Class 8 exemption, local governments have an important role to play in the protection of the environment. As a local jurisdiction, we'll have the ability to license and regulate local marijuana businesses to the best, best protect the environmental resources. Local governments also permitted to prohibit outdoor cultivation, which will protect the environment from illegal water diversion, protect sensitive animal species that may be impacted by pesticides and rodenticides, as was indicated earlier. With that, that concludes my SEQA presentation. If anybody has any questions, I prefer to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll just summarize the agenda item requests. The requests are one, to set and hold a public hearing on December 6, 2016. Request number two is to approve a non-project exemption, a general rule exemption, and a Class 8 categorical exemption pursuant to the California Environment Equality Act and the State SEQA Guidelines. Request number three is to adopt the interim zoning ordinance prohibiting all commercial, non-medical marijuana activity in the unincorporated areas of the county, prohibiting outdoor non-medical marijuana cultivation on private residences in the unincorporated areas of the county, and prohibiting indoor cultivation of non-medical marijuana in the unincorporated areas of the county, except indoor cultivation that complies with certain, certain reasonable regulations, as an urgency measure pursuant to Government Code Sections 23123, 25131, and 65858. A four-fifths vote is required. Request number four is to approve a summary of the ordinance and direct the clerk of the board to publish and post a summary within 15 days after passage in the Visalia Times Delta in accordance with Government Codes, Code Section 25124B1. Request number five is to direct the Environmental Assessment Officer of the Tulare County Resource Management Agency- Resource Management Agency or designee to file a notice of exemption with the Tulare County Clerk. Request number six is to direct staff to set a public hearing for January seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, at nine-thirty a.m. Request number seven is to direct the clerk of the board to notice such hearing in accordance with Government Code Section Six, Five, Eight, Five, Eight, in order to consider this ordinance and a proposed extension thereof prior to the expiration of the, of this ordinance in forty-five days. And request number eight is to direct, the director of the RMA or his designee to issue a written report ten days prior to the expiration of the interim ordinance or to the extension thereof, if applicable, describing the measures taken to alleviate the conditions which led to the adoption of the ordinance. With that, I'd like to thank our RMA staff for the work that they put to get, that they put in to put this presentation together, Tulare County Sheriff's Department for their assistance in this presentation and the information they provided to you, Tulare County Fire Department Chief Norman was very helpful in putting this presentation together, the Act Commissioner Marilyn, who helped us with some of the information we presented today, Tulare County Trash Treasurer and Tax Collector, and of course, your Board and CIO for your direction and guidance, and County Council, which Jennifer Takahana put a lot of time and effort into this presentation, so. With that, if you have any comments and questions?
Good presentation, Ben, and all of Ben's great job of clarifying what the... Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do. Just, just briefly, Ben, I'm looking back on slide seventy-two, you don't have to go there, talks about applications for building permits. So are we saying we're not going to issue any building permits to anybody wanting to put electrical in a two-car garage to do their own grow site?
No, while we don't ask what the purpose is of, you know, when we get a building permit, so that doesn't mean that if you come in and get a building permit...
Somebody comes in and wants to do a six-by-six grid of, of, you know, hundred amp, use bulbs in a garage, you don't look at that and go, oh, this is an obvious grow site?
This ordinance will allow for the indoor cultivation, so...
Okay, so that, that will concern, this is no application for building permit...
For commercial activities.
Okay.
So if we're aware of that.
Slide doesn't say "commercial activity."
Oh.
So just "commercial activity," building permits, just "commercial activity" only?
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
The ordinance does say no building permits will be issued that are in contravention to the ordinance, so basically indoor cultivation is permitted if it's in accordance with the reasonable regulations, and basically, I think Ben's saying they're not asking people why they're getting specific permits usually, so they may not have the occasion to know on, on any particular instance, but it's possible that somebody may come in and, and ask for such.
Not, we will open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak to this issue may do so at this time. Clarify yourself and give us your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Philip Bordat. My address is two-nine-two-four West Main Street, just have a seat over there, Visalia, California. I'm an attorney. I represent Cana Can Help, which is located in the Goshen area and is a medical marijuana dispensary. Sitting through this hearing today, I'm reminded of the musical The Music Man, where Harold Hill, the flim-flamming salesman, created this issue in the community in order that he could sell band instruments and uniforms to the personnel, to the people of, of River City. And he kept saying, "There's trouble right here in River City. That rhymes with P, which stands for pool." And pool was ruining the morals of River City. So now we have, "There's trouble right here in Tulare County. That rhymes with P, and that stands for pot." So I would caution you that, I don't know how many of you have read Proposition Sixty-four, I've read it several times, there are so many safeguards in this proposition that to say that we have an issue here that has to be immediately addressed is fallacy as, as it goes to commercial operations. You cannot legally have a commercial operation anywhere in the state of California unless you're first licensed by the state of California, and then the local counties can have licensing also. So to put this ordinance in effect for forty-five days, you're not going to change anything, or to put it into effect for two years, because under the Proposition Sixty-four, the state does not have to issue any licenses till January of two thousand eighteen, because they're going to go through a whole process of putting things in place. Now, we have, most of what was being said today talks about people who illegally grow and sell marijuana. This proposition would create legal people, so hopefully the illegal people will be pushed out of the area. If we don't have any legal marijuana sales here, we're still going to have illegal marijuana sales in this county. Nothing under the federal law, or the state law, or the local ordinances has stopped people from using marijuana. We have a current president who's admits to using marijuana, we have several past presidents who admit using marijuana, and this is just like when, when the federal government was trying to do another amendment to repeal prohibition. Prohibition did not work. All prohibition did was create lots and lots of illegal alcohol sales, alcohol distilleries, moonshiners, and nothing ever got solved by that amendment.
Time is up, please wrap it up.
Okay, I'm an attorney, sir. It's hard for me to wrap things up in three minutes. So what I would ask that you do here is you look at the proposition, you see that there is no urgency issue on the commercial use, because the state's going to regulate it, and they can't do it legally until they get a license. If somebody sets up a commercial operation, you know, next week, next month, you can easily close them down because they have no license. You have the laws in, in a force, in force now to do that, and Cana Can Help would like to help the Board of Supervisors to implement this, because the amount of taxes that will be generated by this, which I saw nothing in the presentations about, the amount of taxes are astronomical. It's, the proposition provides for nine dollars and twenty-five cents for the manufacturer of it, and then there's taxes for the distribution of it, and then there's taxes for the sale of it. I hope you saw that Hanford is, is probably approving a commercial grow facility in the old Pirelli plant in Hanford. What, just let me finish this one...
I'm not a lawyer, but I'm saying wrap it up.
Okay, I am, I am. This is just the last one. I didn't mean to upset you, Mr. Anis, and I, I'm sorry. But if you look at what Hanford's doing, they're estimating fourteen million dollars a year from just the growing of medical marijuana. If, once they get a license to do non-medical, it's going to increase considerably. I think we need the money in Tulare County. We're not going to stop illegal pot by refusing to allow legal pot.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Anis. But I, I thought you could just...
Your time's up.
You're going to make me mad in a minute, I'm not mad yet, yes.
Hello, Board. Good to see you all again, I'm sure you remember me, I definitely remember you. Wes Harden, I'm the Operations Manager of Cana Can Help in Goshen. From our standpoint, we're here, we made it, Prop Sixty-four passed, and now it's decision time, and it's time for law enforcement, industry, and government to work together, to play their active roles in how this is all going to play out and go forward. There's nobody in this room that thinks that the progression of recreational cannabis shouldn't be done without certain safety regulations put in place. I would never disagree that any environmental impact needed to be overlooked, but I think that it's also important, moving forward, to start to associate cannabis as less of a fringe agricultural industry, but the future of agricultural industry. And fortune favors the bold, and we're going to have to answer to our children and our grandchildren about decisions that we make today. And I think that overlooking the need that people have for cannabis and overlooking the tax revenue that a company like mine could generate would be irresponsible of us as business people and as government, and, and I think that when I have to explain to my grandchild what happened in two thousand sixteen, I want to say that there were forward-thinking people that were willing to work with each other, and we made our county great. We made our county great again, right? Because now's the time to do it. We appreciate everything you guys do, we know you have a hard job, we have a hard job, law enforcement has a hard job, and we appreciate the fact that we're moving, we're moving slowly forward with this, and I know it's a lot of me to ask to say, "We want to do this right now, it's time to do it right now." I, I get that there's an ideological battle that we're still in the middle of, and it's going to be a slow-moving process, but there's responsible parties out there, companies like mine who operate above board, who are completely responsible and completely ethical, and think about the environment. And I, and I really encourage you guys to come on out. I think this is the third or fourth invitation, I'm, I'm going to be offended next time, that's all I'm saying. But I want you guys to come out, I want you guys to see how we operate, how we interact with our customers, how the future of cannabis looks, because it looks like me and it looks like my company, and we have the infrastructure and the funding to create what is a five-million-dollar business right now, turn that into a twenty-five-million-dollar business within five years. And we want you guys to be part of that, and we think that the consumers of the county would be gracious, and our grandchildren, when the infrastructure of a county is better than it once was when we got here, are going to be very, very appreciative of that, and I'm appreciative of your guys' time, I hope you have a great Christmas, and hopefully we'll talk again soon. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Let's tell you, though, that Tulare County is one of the solvent counties in the state. We can't say that about our state government. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm Attorney Ken Brock. I've been practicing in this county for twenty-five years, and I helped to judge the float show in Farmersville this year with Mr. Shida. And I'm very concerned about this county, that, that you shouldn't pass this because it's overbroad. The, them coming at you and saying, "We've got a big problem, we need to put in some measures right now in order to stop a problem that's on our doorstep," is couched in, in vagaries. For example, child endangerment. Children aren't going to be eating Miracle-Gro-looking substances like that. Child endangerment is charged in criminal cases, anytime you have a child present in a DUI stop or in a grow site or something like that. Where was there one evidence of, you know, a child was actually harmed? So they come at you and they say, "Look, you, you need to put this measure in place because children are going to be in danger." There is no evidence that a child has actually been harmed in something like that. A toy next to a grow field, you know, okay, it doesn't look great, but it's not evidence of anything, it's just, hey, do something. And what we want you to do, they're saying, is clamp down on this with some regulations that are going to last for forty-five days, and in forty-five days, we're going to take a look at this and maybe amend them in a way, but we might continue them out for twenty-two months. And what you're really doing, not knowing, is you're creating a monopoly in this county that the medical marijuana dispensaries are profiting from, and not just a small amount, a massive amount. And this regulations, this is, this is legal in the state now, for you to create these regulations that allow for the continued monopolization of the sales does no one any good, and it doesn't get us to the place where we have legitimate, reasonable regulations in place, so that the free people of the county of Tulare, the state of California, can do what the law says that we could do freely and legally. Now, this limitation on only six per house, that's another problem. Why is it six per residence? Why? It's arbitrary. What if Bob and I, and I'm not saying I want to grow, but what if Bob and I want to use my garage, that's twelve plants we could have, but no, they say not, do, do no more than six, because, well, there could be an electrical fire, or somebody might want to use butane, you know, all of these very rushed-to-judgment and overbroad regulations that they want you to put in place are because of non-factual fear mongering. So I would say deny this right now, come back in forty-five days with a reasonable proposal for why you would want to have regulations like this in place, as opposed to saying, "The law will right now be, and it's a misdemeanor because we say so, no more than six per house. We won't issue any licenses for construction if we believe, from the Licensing Department, that one light will give you more than six per house." That's now, that's now not possible, we're going to deny your application for a permit. See, the, the problem is, it's just overbroad and it's too soon. I, I respect and totally hope that you will make good regulations that will help this be a safe and, and lawful enterprise. But what you've been asked to vote on today and approve by four out of five, and you're probably inclined to do that, is to put in place regulations which, if we look at what you've done in the past...
Wrap it up, please.
You bet. If we look at what you've done in the past, is to take what initially gets on the board and then make minor changes, slowly, slowly trying to move forward, but what you did ultimately, though, was create monopolies which are not in the best interests of anyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to clarify for the Board and the listening audience, the six per residence, that's in the proposition, that's not yours.
That's in the state, yes.
It's arbitrary, though.
Anybody else wishing to speak to this issue?
Not you being arbitrary.
Hi, my name's Mike Cusaro, I've lived here in Visalia since I was born, my parents, teachers here, and actually, Mike Grub was my water polo coach, and I'm actually calling up here because I was a little confused on the environmental impacts and wanted to see actually, of all those fish that are going to be impacted, how many of them are actually here in Tulare County? And of that, the whole odor thing and whatnot, I mean, we live in Tulare County, guys, like, what do we smell here? It's cows, you know? I drive down the road, you know, and like, take my, my daughter to daycare, and I just smell cows, you know, that's what I smell. So, and, and the whole bringing everything indoors and whatnot, I'm a father, I'm expecting another child on the way, and actually, it kind of like frightens me that we're going to actually allow, okay, you put it indoors in your house and whatnot, and I understand that it's supposed to be behind a locked door and whatnot, kids can't get to it, but kids like to get into stuff. I liked to get into cupboards when I was a kid, you know? I like to go, "Hey, you can't have that cereal, I'm going to eat that cereal," you know? And anyways, I just think that you should leave it up to the professionals, that the people that actually want to be into this industry, allow them the process to do it in a manner that if there is an odor or whatnot, put them in an area that maybe they're not around people, you know? Put them, I've seen places up in Oregon and whatnot that are completely around, around nobody at all, and the people that actually work there have never even had a, had a impact or anything to do with marijuana. The people that work there are farm laborers, and they're, they're happy to be making fourteen dollars an hour, thirteen dollars an hour, and they've never even touched a plant in their life. So whatever decision you guys make today, I just hope it's the best for the county, and I thank you for your time.
Come on up to the microphone, please, yeah, go ahead.
Bob Liddikens, you know me because of my working with youth, but I didn't come here for that today, I came here on groundwater, but I'm going to say something on the marijuana situation. I've been an employee and an owner for over sixty years, and have hired people at one-hundred-and-sixty a year around and three-hundred-and-eighty seasonal people, and I have dealt with, many years ago, the drinking problem, and solved that with many people that don't drink today because I've worked with them. Drugs, I have never been able to solve, those that started with marijuana, had an eighteen-year-old that spent part of his time in our home, that, that got in trouble with the jail and so on with the law on drugs, worked for me for eighteen years off of drugs, went back on drugs, unfortunately from marijuana, he went to cocaine, and I asked him why, and he said, "Because I had a depression, I had not feeling good, I remember what I felt like when I was on marijuana," and went back on drugs. I had the same thing with another one, from, young man from Exeter who spent a year in our home instead of in jail. We had him at our home instead of being in jail, did well, got him to go to Fresno State, it became out of reporter, did well, the job in, in Bakersfield, ended up in Norco, wondered why, he says again, he could remember how he felt with the marijuana, he went back on drugs, even though he'd been off of it for a number of years, and I can repeat a couple others. I have not been able to win one young man over permanently off of drugs. I have on drinking... I have on drinking, I can introduce you to many that are 70, 80, 90 years old in this area, and I have today 35 people that have worked with me over 30 years. And none have a drinking problem today, but drugs, if they've been on marijuana to start with as young people, they can remember how they felt when they were young, and if they're later on depressed for some reason, they have to get that lift, and unfortunately, it doesn't end up being back on marijuana, it's cocaine or something else. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wanting to speak to this issue? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, the ordinance that we are considering today does not ban recreational, the sale of recreational marijuana in Tulare County. It bans the sale of recreation marijuana in the unincorporated communities of Tulare County. The cities have their own jurisdictions, we have eight incorporated cities, they have the ability to, to determine if they want to sell marijuana. So there's no way in the world that we're banning the sale of recreational marijuana throughout the county. I think we have a good track record of our ordinance with medical marijuana, and I believe everything is working well in place, and I am not looking for the expansion of, of recreation marijuana in the unincorporated communities of Tulare County.
Mr. Chair, this is a rare occasion. I actually agree with Phil Bordette. I do not believe there's an urgency to do this right now. I'll, I'll leave, leave it at that. There is no urgency because we already have a capable sheriff's code enforcement team on hand taking care of business. I don't think this is going to create any more grow sites than we've had over the last several years. We're, we're looking at 6, 7, 800 grow sites. They can, you know, they showed the list of 100 and whatever up to 209. That's what they can eradicate. They focus on the biggest, baddest, most egregious, and they go after those. So I don't believe there's an urgency, and I'm not going to support this.
I certainly do believe there's an urgency, and if we don't get things in place, then down, we still have time down the road. The state hasn't come back, but I think it's, it's, it's time that we put what we feel in Tulare County in place and move forward. That's the way I look at it, and I think that we're on the right track.
Mr. Chairman, I think one of the urgency parts of this resolution is if you are looking to sell recreational marijuana, start a business, you better look in the incorporated cities and not the unincorporated communities of Tulare County.
I, I, I sort of focus more on the, the land use issue as opposed to the sales, and so we're talking more about the growing and the, of that, the product. And to that extent, I, I take some umbrage of Mr. Bordette's comments about making up things. I mean, we've had actual homicides, we've had actual criminal activity, and we've had actual fires. We've had, and, you know, it's not a, it's not a possible thing, it's not a, a made-up thing, it actually exists. And we have people who are coming to this county, and, and because we are the number one ag county in the nation, they're looking, they'd like to develop. I understand in Monterey County, which used to have a very large greenhouse popu, uh, industry, much of which has been lost to South America because of labor costs, that there's a tremendous buying and selling right now of, of these greenhouse gases, uh, greenhouse gases, greenhouse operations for, for raising marijuana. And my, my thought on that is, you know, what we're doing today is setting in place something, but it doesn't mean it won't be changed in the future. I've mentioned to some of you on the board that we have these huge packing house operations, cold storage facilities, they're making a time when they're not being used for their intended purpose. And just like the, the tire facility in Hanford, you know, you want to make use of facilities, and there may be a time when this would be something which would be considered. But at the present time, I think it's appropriate for us to take these steps to, so that people don't come in here and say, "Well, I bought 40 acres, I was planning to grow marijuana," and then the county says, "I can't grow marijuana." No, we're telling you, don't, don't even, don't think about that. It may change in the future. As for now, the answer is no. Don't spend your money, don't do your, don't do your due diligence to energy trying to do something which, as of right now, the county is saying, from a land use standpoint, we don't want this. And, and to that end, there are places that do, are, are looking for this, in, in this, in the city of, of Kalinga. They're looking to try to take a prison facility there and, and turn it into a cash cow. More power to them. But, but we have just seen in our county that the, the promise of, of wonderfulness and financialism and so forth has actually been a black hole in terms of cost. And it's had an impact also, I mean, from a standpoint of law enforcement, criminal investigation, prosecution, public defender, incarceration, these are major expenses. And, and you have to factor that into it, too. And I understand in Colorado, they're finding that to be the case as well. So anyway, at this point, I support the plan, and again, all these things are subject to change in the future. And at such a point in time, is if the state gets its act together and they get this thing regulated well, and there's not problems, Tulare County could decide they want to participate as well. But I think as of right now, it's smart for us to make this move, so we eliminate people coming in, starting up businesses, only to find out that, oh, this is a surprise to me. No surprise, this is not, we're not receptive at this point in time to, to this, to this use of, of our lands.
Mr. Chair, just, you know, my, my mind is often brought back to an email that I received in a conversation that I had with a superintendent of the Allensworth School District related to Red Ribbon Week, and how he could encourage his kids to be drug-free in their lives when they're walking to school and they're walking by a home that has marijuana being grown in its backyard. I think Supervisor Ashida lived in a community where he walked by cigarette signs all the time because he still smokes today, so he didn't heed the drug-free message either. But, you know, that superintendent brought to my attention that walking by the marijuana was, you know, very contrary to the message he was trying to deliver to the kids at school. Now, this isn't outlawing the growing of marijuana for personal consumption recreationally or, or medicinally. You can still grow six plants inside of your own private residence, that's legal as permitted by the proposition. I think that I agree with my colleagues making the comment that we're sending a signal to the outside world as to how marijuana is going to be handled here in Tulare County. I got a call from the general manager at the International Agri Center asking about what the county was going to be doing today, and I said, you know, I can never predict what the Board of Supervisors is going to do, especially District III, and I think that's coming to fruition today. But he, he said, you know, "We're getting requests from exhibitors that want to come and advertise different trimming plant, or trimming technologies for marijuana plants and different fertilizers and different things, and we really just need to know whether or not we should be, how we should handle that, or how agriculture is going to be accepting marijuana in Tulare County." And I think I agree with what Supervisor Worthley said, that today, given the current environment, I, I think that we are very forward-thinking and moving forward just for the protection of the safety of our rural communities and the, the general public in the unincorporated area of the county. So I think it makes a lot of sense to add recreational to the medicinal terminology that we've already had in place in Tulare County, and, and I think our communities will be safer for this. So I'm definitely in support of moving forward.
I'll move. I'll second. Moved by Supervisor Worthley, second by Supervisor Ashida. Cast your votes. The vote is four to one with Supervisor Cox voting no. Thank you. Take a recess.
Well, it's lunchtime. You're not going to finish this up in the next 20, 30 minutes.
Well, at this time, I think we're going to recess for lunch. Be back here at, let's say, 1:00? 1:00? 1:00.
Mr. Chairman?
Are we recessing to closed session?
Mr. Chairman? Can we also recess for closed session while we're recessing for lunch?
Yeah.
Give me just one second because we have some items off.
A through O.
Items A, you have your, on your board's closed session agenda, items A through O.
The board, the board will be recessing to lunch, but also to closed session.
Items A through C and E and F are off agenda.
Okay, thank you.
I guess. Looking for the, the rest of the story.
Our next one is the, that appeal. Got two hands, why the hell not? Can't make it up. He might make up two votes or something like that. Really? I don't think you're going to make it up. Looks something like this.
Yeah.
Are there no hinges? There's no kind of screw-ups like that.
Okay, board's back in session. We'll take up item number eight now, certified statement of vote for November 8th presidential general election.
Item what?
It's supposed to be Rita?
Rita.
Yeah, that's on consent.
Yeah, that was on consent.
Yeah, we're on, it was on the consent. Oh, was that on consent? Yeah.
We're on 53.
Sorry about that. Okay, we will go to item 53, untimed items, finding denial, appeal of planning commission's approval of PSR 15-006, PSA 16-006 for Dollar General store. Mike Washam.
Good morning, Chairman, or wait, good afternoon, Chairman, Supervisors, Ms. Bales Lang, Mike Washam, Economic Development and Planning Branch for the RMA. Today, we are back before your board for consideration of findings and clarifications for the denial of the appeal for final site plan PSR 15-006. The, although, although staff has responded to all these claims that have been made previously, and, and the facts are backed by substantial evidence in the record, the board requested staff to return to, to conclude its, its, to finalize and conclude its tentative decision of November 8th, 2016, with consideration of a new final decision of denial and affirming, affirming the planning commission's decision of the project approval per the following clarification and responses. What I'm going to do is walk through the slides, kind of break it down to comments from the, the appellant's attorney, Mr. Pelzer, then followed by some comments from Mr. Dunlap, and followed by some other comments from other public who are in attendance. So first, two clarifications and responses to arguments made by the appellant's attorney, Pelzer, on November 8th, 2016. One, one A, the, basically, the contention was that the project cannot be made to comply with the scenic landscape section of the general plan and subordinate general plan policies in zoning ordinance sections. However, it does comply with the state and county scenic highway corridor, the guidelines are based on building sites, siding setbacks, signage, landscape requirements, et cetera. Gateway to Sequoias is another policy, the project has rustic facade, and originally they were trying to go into the community of Springville, but they were presented with opposition, and it would have been an easier entitlement if, if they had, but they didn't want it in Springville. Highway commercial, the project's design does not significantly impact visual impacts and travel experiences with the landscape screening and project features found in the final site plan. Another argument was that it needed a plan development, however, under the PDFM zone section requires only a final site plan review and not a plan development. But, but, so you never really get to section 18.6 F2. Alternatively, the project still requires, or complies with those requirements anyway. So either way you look at it, the project still complies. Here's the final site plan, some clarification was requested. The 18.6-foot setback, the required requirement under the zoning ordinance is, is 10% of the width of the property, which would be an 18, minimum 18-foot setback. This clearly shows the 18.6. Identifies the Del Oro access easement, the 50 feet on the east side of the property. The building is actually set back 126 feet from the right-of-way. The requirement is 100-foot setback in the scenic corridor area, and this is actually 126 feet. Adjacent property access was, was identified there. Location of the monument sign, location of the berm and basin and, and landscape screening, and identifies where the underground utility line and the existing 8-inch water line are located. Further, a request was for a more detailed landscape plan that was presented by the Dollar General developer when he was here making his presentation, so we've incorporated that site plan that they wanted. All, all downward lighting, there's limitations of no, no banners or flags or other advertising material within that 100-foot setback. Here's another showing that the, the sign on the building itself is not illuminated, it's downward lighting to light the, the sign on the building itself. This sign, and this, just to clarify, your, your PowerPoint presentation shows a four-by-four, that was incorrect. It's, it's a four-by-eight maximum size with a three-by-five-foot Dollar General sign face. Again, this for the monument sign, and it's no interior lit, so any lighting would be downlit on, from, from above the surface down. The SEQA finding under, under 1B, the applicant, or the appellant was suggesting that it can't be, it, it needs to consider the entirety of the 28-acre project, not just the 1.35-acre parcel, questioning the lawfulness under the, under the California SEQA as far as dividing this into piecemeal project development. The rest of this project is not part of it, this clearly identifies the entire parcel, this is a single development project, and it shows the entire large parcel as being not part of this project. Again, on this, water lines crossing state Route 198 would be found consistent with this project. California, or Caltrans defers to lead agency on behalf of off-site improvement SEQA to be part of the project's encroachment permit, and to not have a significant effect of SEQA and therefore considered exempt. The high nitrate levels in the area, as presented by the appellant, could also be associated with existing environmental conditions, but was not affected by the project. Septic system was found by county environmental health department and geotechnical engineer to have not a significant effect on the environment, and it was found consistent with the PDFM zoning, and evidence presented by the attorney was not expert evidence.
Mike, on item number, section 1B, number two, do you mean Highway 190?
Oh, you're right, yes, 190. Yeah. The, the third contention basically was that the due process was not served by the three recusals at the planning commission meeting. Due process was served by the planning commission, and that alternatively, due process has also been served in the decision by your board of supervisors making the decision ultimately on this project. The recusal of the three commissioners as allowed under the Brown Act, Fair Political Practices Act, and county planning mission rules and policies is exactly used for this instance. There are, there were actually... There are, uh, there were actually or even perceived, there were no actual or perceived conflicts of interest. The remaining four members of the planning commission, by the weight of the evidence produced, uh, does, does not show bias on their part. The board is not giving deference to the commission and finds that the facts in the record speak for themselves as the board confirms the planning commission's decision. These are comments that were, um, from, from, uh, Mr. Dunlap. The first one is basically the project was, was approved using, um, comprehensive planning, uh, or that the project was not approved using comprehensive planning policy framework within the general plan. However, the project was indeed approved using this comprehensive planning policy framework of the foothill growth management plan as consistent with the Toole River, uh, development corridor, the county scenic landscape corridor, mixed use land use, the PDFM zoning and sequa. Secondly, uh, he stated that the recusal of the three commissioners made the other four commissioners biased in their decision-making. However, there was no bias on the remaining commissioners and due process was served by the planning commission and alternatively, uh, due process has been served once again in the decision of your board on this project. Finally, uh, he made a request to update the Springville community plan. The Springville community plan will be updated in the coming years and the appellant will have an opportunity to be part of that process. Some of the other, uh, comments were concerns were about traffic and security were addressed by the site plan and, and traffic analysis. Security will be addressed by a security system on site. Concerns about locating this site and the petition against the, um, project in Springville. Other sites is, uh, the, the, the site decision is really a business decision by Embry and Dollar General. Ultimately, the petition stated the, uh, signatories did not want a Dollar General in Springville. Concern about not fitting into the community was addressed by the site design and the project does meet all the requirements. Archaeologists concerned about two, uh, about long-term ramifications. The board finds that the archaeology, archaeologist, excuse me. Found less than significant impacts to cultural resources and if a project is considered to the north of the site, long-term ramifications can be addressed. Concerns about the foothill growth management plan, climate change, uh, Springville looking like Three Rivers, piecemealing and the empty, uh, unoccupied buildings and a request that the board listen to the planning commission hearing. Those are some of the other comments made by the public during the, during the hearing. The project is consistent with the foothill growth management plan and the, uh, initial study mitigating ag deck found that the project will reduce, will reduce greenhouse gas emissions and is not gross, growth inducing. There's sufficient evidence in the record without more in denying this, uh, appeal. Concerns were raised about impacting countryside versus shopping for convenience. Uh, the project may provide convenience for other shoppers other than the person that mentioned that. The project complies with all federal, state and county requirements. There is a concern raised over the lack of business in Springville due to the inability to get building permits some decades ago. Um, county streamline has streamlined the permitting process and can, can really not account why someone cannot get their building permits, but there is, uh, evidently a lack of development interests currently in, in the community of Springville. So based on that, uh, staff's recommendation is that, that your board of supervisors, um, on the findings set forth in exhibit A in your attachment made part hereof, deny the appeal filed by Springville citizens for responsible growth and, uh, affirm the planning commission's decision. That concludes staff's presentation.
Pelzer, would you like to say a few words or?
I took note of the word few in there, so I'll try to keep it brief. Um, last time we were here on election day and congratulations, Mr. Cox, you had a happy election day, so, um, just as a preliminary matter, I, there were some good clarifications in the staff report about setbacks and those kinds of things, and I'll just know that those weren't part of the record before, so I'm glad that they are now. Um, the, the sign and where it's located and the design of it and all that, it's good to have as part of the record, so I'm glad that staff included those. I just have three things I want to point out that the staff has taken great pains to strengthen the record on and so is somewhat new, um, at least in the record, and I want to address, this would be the first opportunity to do so. The first is the scenic corridor issue and the point that was made in the revised findings is that the county, um, recognizes that this is not a state designated highway and, uh, scenic corridor, uh, or scenic highway and because of that, the standards aren't as, as high. Well, I think that's a solution that creates a problem, um, because the general plan says that the county will apply for state designation of its county designated sites and as far as I can tell, that hasn't happened. It also says that the county will work with citizens groups to make sure that those get designated and that also hasn't happened. And so the fact that it is not state designated is not a reason, um, in my opinion, for not upholding scenic corridor standards. Second, the issue regarding the separating of the parcel map from the special use permit is, raises two problems, um, and they're related. One is a planning problem. They're both segmenting and the planning, you have approved a parcel. Actually, you haven't even gotten to consider it. This was done by the planning commission, uh, the parcel map, but it's now made contingent on the, on the special use permit. And so now we don't have planning issues about the rest of the twenty-eight acres. All you have is one point three five acres before you and that does not comply with the provisions of the zoning ordinance. You know, the, the staff report or the findings say that the section that requires this comprehensive development doesn't apply because it is not in the, um, it, it is in the PDF zone, but this is actually in the PDFM zone. And so when it's combined with any other is what your ordinance says, then it does have to comply with this comprehensive planning, one of which is a, uh, comprehensive plan. And we went over last time why the comprehensive plan in this case was not satisfied. You have twenty-eight acres you can plan, you're planning one point three five acres of that. And that is a fundamental problem with that, but it leads to the greater problem, which is sequa. So you've piecemealed a one acre, point three five acre parcel out of twenty-eight on a parcel that you should have comprehensively planned. And the, the findings go to great lengths to try, to say that, uh, we aren't obligated, you as the county, you're not obligated to analyze under sequa things that you don't know were going to happen in the future. And while that's true, um, the fact that you don't know what they're going to happen in the future is a result of the failure to plan for them. And so again, the solution the county has found to this particular problem is just another problem. It's the fact that you haven't planned for the overall parcel and that is the very definition of segmenting, both under general plan and sequa. So I think you have a real, uh, sequa problem, uh, with the way this has been segmented. On the other sequa-based issues, almost all of those relate to the fact that none of the, uh, analysis went to the larger area. And I think you, if you did look to the larger area, you'd find impacts to the remaining parcel. But on the nitrate issue, it's a little bit different. The nitrate issue, the, the reliance on adherence with county and state water resource control board standards in septic system design doesn't answer the fact that even a well-designed system could have nitrate and probably does have nitrate, uh, contamination issues. Over the long term, uh, septic systems do contribute to nitrates. Now, that isn't the case when you're in a, uh, community sewage treatment system because they can specifically treat for nitrates, but you can't do that through septics. And so we did present evidence that this area has a high sensitivity to, to nitrates, that septics contribute to nitrates, even well-designed septic systems. So with that, um, you know, there, there's, our previous record stands. I don't believe the county staff has addressed all of our issues and those were just some of them. I do encourage you to look at the whole thing and, um, find that there is at least discretion, if not a mandate, to reject the project, um, under the terms of the general plan and the zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this? Mr. Dunlap?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, I'm not going to reiterate anything Alex said for all of our sake, especially yours. Just a couple of things. You know, I feel like this whole process has been a battle and I, I really, you know, having been on the other side of the table, being in the staff's position, I really do my best to not make things personal. In this situation, I'm not saying it was personal, but I feel like the questions we've answered, or, or, excuse me, the questions we've asked kind of from the beginning are just now being answered at the second board of supervisors meeting. With clarification, for clarification on the plan, for example. Uh, we now have clarification made by staff. We learned some of that last meeting by the developer or from the developer and it should just be a much more, uh, open conversational, um, process if it's to work well. So, uh, I'm, I'm glad we do have some answers. You know, I think that the, the record does stand in terms of what our concerns are. I think you've, you know, there was a, a comment made by Mr. Washam earlier, earlier in his presentation that the developer ran into, um, opposition in Springville. That's why they moved out of Springville. Well, my understanding is that they moved off of the earlier site they were looking at because they had a half a million dollars worth of street improvements that were going to be needed because of the curvature of highway one ninety and line of sight issues. You, as well as I, have seen for many, many years, that development's going to follow the path of least resistance and the cost, uh, lowest cost possible in balancing out all the other interests. We're at this site today in reality because it's cheaper to develop. It still meets their objective in getting into a geographic area. It's just cheaper to develop. That's why they don't want to hook up to the sewer system at River Island. It's cheaper for them to just build their septic tank, septic system and not connect to the sewer system. It's not good planning. It's just not. And so you saw a long list of signatures from when they were looking at the site in Springville. We did very little legwork and we were well over a hundred people that signed our last list that said we, and it was very specific. It was, "Do we support Citizens for Responsible Growth, Springville Citizens for Responsible Growth's effort to challenge this project and do we support the hiring of Pelzer, Pelzer and Richardson to undertake this appeal?" They knew what they were signing. They affirmatively said, "We oppose this to the extent that we want representation." So to say that we have you, the board, has a constitutional responsibility to approve a project that's discretionary and not vote to represent the people who are speaking with regard to how this project affects the community, it's, it's, it's biased. It's clearly biased. So the fact that you couldn't act on the project last meeting because you didn't have substantial enough findings to have a solid decision to predicate your action is an indication that it shouldn't be approved. And I, I can tell you, I've tried to read through the, the, the record and I can tell you that it's dizzying. It's dizzying to try and follow the line of reasoning to justify the decision. And I just hope you consider the fact that we have unifiedly spoken, uh, the Citizens for Responsible Growth of Springville and we're asking you not to approve the project even though you've taken a tentative action and, and are intending to take action today. Uh, I would hope that, um, that, without taking offense, that staff would hear, uh, my comment about if, if, when something comes up, if we could work to at least get answers early in the process and, and mitigate some of the issues that have carried on for months and months and months. And mind you, there was not a community meeting. There was a meeting with the homeowners association across the road from the project. It wasn't open to the community of Springville. So, uh, there just seems to be a, a tension there and it's not our intention to be, it's not our intention to be divisive or combative. It's our intention to express our concerns and, and move through a process, but to be heard. And I, I really don't feel like until we got to this level that we've at all been heard. And I thank you for listening today.
I, I would like to make one comment to, to Brad about this concept of discretionary. It has been my position since I've been on this board of supervisors. Discretionary in my mind is not a very good term of art to use because in some people's minds it means if I don't like the color, if I don't like the style, if I don't like that business, if I don't like that person, I don't have to vote for it. It's discretionary. That's never been my position. The discretionary part of it comes to the actual land use issues and compliance with the law, compliance with, with our general plan. If it meets those criteria, it's no longer in my mind discretionary. Once we've established whether or not it, that's, that's the part that's discretionary. Mitigation measures, impacts, once we deal with those issues, if it meets the criteria, I have always voted for every project, whether I liked the project or didn't like the project. It's not about that. And that's one of my cons, one of the problems I have with that term discretionary because I know a lot of people who get elected to these positions think it's just that. If fifty people show up and don't like something, it's discretionary. I don't have to do that. I don't think that's, I don't think that's what government's supposed to be doing. Again, it's based upon the facts. When you establish the facts, if it meets the criteria, this supervisor has always voted for it. That's, that's my concept of discretionary and I realize not everybody agrees with that, but that, that's kind of when I, I like to explain my thinking about why I come to something, come to a decision.
And, and I've heard you say that a few times and I, and I, and I understand that. And, and I can respect you being consistent on your position. I would.
One other thing, Greg, I'm going to interrupt you, but one other thing, Joe, this is a, a fascinating project in my mind because when I look at the people who are most affected by this project, they live right across the street from it. There was one person from that community that voiced an opinion and it was a very interesting concern about how she thought that business would be open, being open there would subject to business potential, uh, robbery opportunities and that was her objection to it. But I thought that was really interesting, that a, a group in a community that lives several miles away are the ones who are opposing it. Normally, when we deal with NIMBYism, it's the people who are closest to the project. And I thought it was fascinating that the people who live right next to this project really didn't seem to have the concerns that your group had.
Well, they, they do because they're part of our group. They've signed the, they've signed on to the Citizens for.
I guess that based upon, based upon the conversation or the people who came and testified, I only remember one person who actually testified.
Yeah, and I think you're, you're, there were two and I think that's a, that's, there's a misconception that they're not invested. Uh, and, and part of that reason is, is I believe that the paper didn't do any justice to the process either in that what the conversations that I've had with those residents in River Island East and River Island is that, well, this appears to be a done deal. This appears to be, uh, already decided upon. Why am I going to drive forty miles to, uh, the board of supervisors meeting on a weekday and in the last case on election day, only to have them go ahead and make a decision, um, against what we're recommending or what we're requesting? I can tell you though, that, that many people on our list are residents and property owners in River Island East. So I can see how that would be misleading based on who actually came to the meeting, but they are present.
Anybody else wishing to speak to this issue?
Chairman Dennis, board members. My name's Greg Black and I'm with Palmetto Engineering and Land Surveying out of Bakersfield and I'm here on behalf of Embry Group, developers of the site. And, uh, we've been working diligently with staff over the last many months as we step through the. this process, trying to address a lot of the concerns that have been expressed by residents in the area. I, myself, have personally been involved and continue, will continue to be involved with the final design of the site layout itself. And from that aspect, I'm here and available to answer any questions that you may have regarding the specific layout of the site itself. So, just if you were to have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those for you. Okay?
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak to this?
Mr. Chair, before he starts, you know, I wanted to make one, one comment. You know, I appreciate the way in which Mr. Pelzer and Dunlap addressed the issues. The only thing that I'm looking at is, as Brad said, there were no community meetings. This is the way the county is set up. The Planning Commission meetings are held here. The community is invited. So, I, if we were to, you know, require a community meeting every project out in an incorporated community, I think we'd be killing our staff. So, I think we have followed proper protocol by having those public meetings here. And it would be nice if we could have, you know, those public meetings. I've been involved with other projects where the project developer takes it upon themselves to call those meetings and meet with the, you know, with property owners in the nearby area. Maybe that's something our staff could suggest to developers in the future.
Thank you, thank you for that. And we'll take it under consideration. We do meet often in communities, as we did this time. We had not one, but two meetings with those people across, across the road at River Island. We met with the Board of Directors first, and then we went and met with the overall annual meeting. It was last NFL championship weekend, because the championship games were on while we were meeting, and it was, it was presented there. So, we met those two times. Then, we held the PRC meeting, at which some of these people attended the PRC meeting after this, because we went out preliminarily and met. And, and so, there's a PRC meeting, there's two meetings at the community. There was not one, but there was two Planning Commission meetings. The first one, a large contingent of people did come. They continued it. They wanted more SEQA review, and that's when we continued the matter. Did, did the, performed the mitigated NAGDEC initial study, and then came back to the Planning Commission once again, and then we've come to your board. Now, this is the second time with your board. So, we did do significant number of meetings and opportunities to comment. And this whole time, we also had a lot of email and phone calls and letters back and forth with the community members.
Before you, and you've just struck something which I thought I was going to respond to also, and that is that, you know, this is an iterative process. So, there was an objection made that, well, some of these things we're just finding out about now. Well, that is part of the process. I mean, you start with a plan, and you work your way through this, this public process, and along the way, changes are made. And that is, I mean, it's, it's a positive thing, because people come and they make their, express their concerns, that their concerns can be addressed the day at the meeting by the part of the applicant or the, or the board that's hearing the case and make determinations, they might want to make alterations. They're made. It doesn't mean that the project, that there's something surreptitious about that. That's, that's part of the process. It's also expected in, in the SEQA analysis, that you do the same things. Mitigation measures are adopted along the way, and that way, you deal with issues. I mean, it's a, whether it's a perfect system or not, it is the way that it works. And I, and I think it's, I think at the end of the day, it's a good thing. So, people can show up and say, "Well, I was heard. I raised this concern. The concern was addressed, and now we move forward." It doesn't mean the project gets killed because I raised the concern to go, "Hey, they didn't think about this at step one." No, they didn't. Maybe they didn't think about it. But when it's brought to the attention of the applicant and to the, and to the board that's hearing, hearing it, they can make those kind of changes, changes along the way. That's the way the system works.
I'd like to just make a couple of responses to, as far as the scenic corridor being hot, state scenic corridor qualifications. The, the, it is not a state scenic corridor. He's correct in that, but that's not what our approach is. Our approach is that the general plan has a policy in there that this is a county scenic highway. They have policies regarding that, which this project complies with. The state does not have a statewide standard regulations for scenic corridors. The process is, the community, the agency, the whatever puts together an application for scenic highway designation, they submit that. So, it's the, it's the county, or the cities, or whatever jurisdictions involved with that roadway segment. It's their, their project that they put forward for recommendation to the state for them to accept it as a scenic highway. So, it's nothing that we go to a state standard sitting there. Second, secondly, talking about the PDFM zone, when, when Mr. Pelzer said that the M-zone triggers the fact that we have to go to that extra thing, well, the M-zone is not an underlying zoning. It also is an overlay. It's mobile homes. What that, what that overlay, that M, does allow is, a mobile home could be installed there. It's not an underlying zone like an AE-10, or, or an AE, or a commercial, or something like that. It's simply another overlay zone, which it allows the mobile homes to be put in there. So, I just wanted to clarify those two things. And pie mail, as far as pie mail goes, again, that this project, if this project is, is not going forward, then there is no parcel map. It's contingent on approval of this.
Well, I must say that during this whole thing, I had people that actually wanted that dollar store up there. Sure, we had a lot of people that didn't want it, but we had a lot of people that did want it. And I even talked to people in the gated communities just down the Frager Valley Highway there. They weren't against it. But I listened to the people that were here, and that's how I made my decision. So, it's up to the board to-
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to respond to Mr. Pelzer on a couple of issues. One is that we do not site plan private property. The county does not have that authority, nor do, or do we have the wherewithal to site plan all the different zone properties that we have in, in the county. The other one is the state scenic highway. I worked two years trying to get a state scenic highway through Three Rivers. It did not go through. It did not go through because we were waiting for the community plan, because without the community of Three Rivers, there's no scenic highway. And during that process, over the two years, there were many articles written about what we were trying to do, and the question came up, "Why doesn't 190 become a scenic highway?" Well, 190 doesn't become a scenic highway because people in Three Rivers didn't put the effort out to make it happen. So, without the communities that are the gateways on these scenic highways, scenic highways do not happen. So, when Three Rivers get, I mean, when Springville does their community plan, if they want to include a scenic highway in that corridor, that's the time to do it. It's a very, it's not a very hard thing to do, and there is a lot of exceptions which would, would include your existing development. On the PDFM zone, that was a zone put in place long before I ever sat on this board, probably twenty years before I sat on this board. If, if that zoning had come up in front of me, I would never have allowed PDFM zone. We've got so much PDFM zone in, in the county that you can do a lot of things all over the county, but it hasn't happened because there hasn't been a need by business to take advantage of that zoning. But overall, as I mentioned several years ago, Talar County's open for business. And if a business wants to locate in a piece of property that is zoned, and they meet the requirements of that zoning, I'm for them going ahead. And there are times, like Supervisor Worthy brought up, is there are times there have been projects I did not like, and especially right around that River Island area, that had this zone for residential development, I would have voted against. But because it was entitled by the zone, there wasn't a choice on my part to say I didn't like the project. It met the requirements of the zone. So, that's where I sit on it.
Mr. Sheriff, there's no further. I think staff has done a, an acceptable job providing the clarifications and the findings of the appeal, and I would make the motion to deny the appeal and affirm the Planning Commission's approval for final site plan or PSR 15-006 and special use permit number PSP 16-006.
Second. Moved by Supervisor Cox. Second by Supervisor Sheed. Cast your votes. The vote is four, with Ennis saying no. Okay. We'll move on to item number 55. Public Works Branch Indirect Cost Proposal. Benjamin.
Good afternoon, Chairman and board members. County Council, Ben Reese, Director of Resource Management Agency. Before you today is a request for your board's approval for the Resource Management Agency to submit an indirect cost rate proposal to the state of California. Little bit of background, all local government agencies desiring to claim indirect costs for federal aid or state-funded projects must prepare annually an indirect cost rate proposal. Last December, the Resource Management Agency submitted to the California Department of Transportation, or Caltrans, its first ICRP as part of a strategic initiative to help reduce expenses and enhance revenues for the Public Works Branch. That proposal was approved in January of, earlier this year. So, in order to keep requesting reimbursement for these indirect costs, we must submit an updated indirect cost rate proposal to reflect current cost data. So, we take in all the information from last fiscal year to come up with a new, basically, indirect cost rate or a overhead multiplier to apply to our invoices to the state. Additionally, we did have an audit performed on the proposal we submitted last year. We haven't gotten the formal response, but when staff was here, they did indicate to us that they would alert us if they had any findings, and they didn't make us aware of any findings on the proposal that we submitted last year. Item 54, which has been pulled and for consideration at a future date, is a similar proposal for our Economic Development and Planning Branch. So, I had prepared this presentation to cover both. But basically, it's a very simple formula. Our staff looks back at last fiscal year and determines what our, basically, our overhead and admin costs were for the Public Works Branch, as well as our Economic Development and Planning Branch, and comes up with a, basically, an overhead multiplier. It's a simple formula. It's basically your indirect costs divided by your direct salaries and wages. Last year, our multiplier was also, I think, about forty-one percent. This year, for Public Works, very similar, it's forty point two, point six percent. So, that allows us to apply that multiplier to our direct costs and get basically additional reimbursement for state-funded, federally funded, and even measure our funded projects. So, all of our road, bridge projects, and safety projects. Our proposal is to do the same for our Economic Development and Planning Branch for the work that they do on those, on those projects, and we'll bring that item before your board here shortly. As I mentioned, last year was the first year we submitted the proposal. It was approved in January, so we were able to collect reimbursement for about five out of the twelve months of the fiscal year. We collected an additional revenue of about $133,400. For this coming fiscal year, since we have an approved indirect cost in place, and based on the number of projects that we have, and basically, it's the number of staff that we have working on these projects, we expect to get some addition, or an increase in revenue of about $400,000 as a result of this indirect cost rate. The numbers we're working on for our Planning Branch, the Planning Branch helps the Public Works projects or the transportation projects in securing regulatory agency permits from California Department of Fish and Wildlife, Army Corps, also helps us with our environmental documents. So, they assist in all our transportation projects. So, if we can get both approved, submitted and approved, we think it's additional revenue amounting to almost, you know, half a million dollars. So, with that, you know, I'd like to thank your board, the CAO, who's been instrumental in providing the leadership and directive to get this, this done, the county auditor and controller who's reviewed our proposal and made sure that our methodology was reasonable, our RMA fiscal staff who prepares this report and submits it to the state and worked with the state over the last couple of weeks on the audit, and the RMA Public Works and Economic Development Branches for the data that they provided to prepare this report. So, our request today is simply to authorize the middle of the Public Works Branch indirect cost rate proposal. The Economic Development and Planning Branch proposal will come to you at a future date.
Benjamin, how many other counties are doing this?
You know, I'm not sure. We did do some research. There are a few other counties that are doing, but I don't have that number off the top of my head, so.
You've probably been thinking outside the box.
One thing I, I was surprised, I didn't realize you had to do this annually. I thought, hey, once you got a place, right? So, ditto.
Yeah.
We'll notify you when things change. No, I guess that doesn't work for the state.
We have the template in place now, so.
Since Supervisor Ennis took the words right out of my mouth, I'm going to say them anyways. Great outside-the-box thinking with this. It's costs that we're incurring doing the work for the state government, and they should be reimbursed, and not many entities are actually thinking outside the box in doing that. But you are, and I actually am glad, even though it takes extra effort to come back each year to update this amount, I'm glad that you're doing it, because it really does show that the cost can change over time, up or down, and I just think it's good. It's just good due diligence to be done when you're asking to be reimbursed for costs that you actually should be incurring.
Motion approved.
I'll second.
By Supervisor Worthy. Second by Supervisor Vanderpool. Cast your votes. Vote unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Benjamin. Okay, item 56, Climate Action Plan, 2015-16 Annual Progress Report and Cap Monitoring Graphic Control.
I'm just here to introduce our consultant for this project, Dave Mitchell.
Chairman, members of the board, my name's Dave Mitchell, environmental consultant. The cap has been in place for a few years now, and this is the first progress report. And when we looked at the, what we would need to know in order to say it's being a success or not, we came up with some primary measures of progress. And the main one is, what are the per capita emission rates, and how much progress have we made towards our cap progress for 2020? The main statistics we like to look at are the change in population and housing, growth in commercial and industrial development, how much the vehicle miles traveled is changing over time, progress in energy and sustainability measures at individual development projects and with the county facilities, and then also, what's the state doing to, on their side, make progress in reducing greenhouse gas that apply to us in Fright County and statewide? Just looking at the per capita emissions rates, for 2015, it comes out to 9.3 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent per person, and that compares to the, the cap target, which is 8.8 metric tons. We've got a little ways to go, but as you can see, the trend lines downward, and it's was projected with the regulations in place and the programs in place, that the county will be in compliance with the cap target in 2020. It's eight point one is the projection compared to the eight point eight target. And then, later years, it's that there's regulations in place to keep it going down over through 2030. One of the things that's important to look at is population growth and the housing growth that goes along with it. And you think about what causes the emissions, and a lot of it is the people driving their vehicles, heating their homes, operating businesses, and, and that'll usually, it'll add up over time to, could be a significant amount. And in the original cap, you'll see here in this statistics, the population, current population projection from the Department of Finance for this year, or last year, was 147,395. And when you look at what was projected when the cap was adopted, it was 160,000. So, substantially under, under projection, and then it comes out to like eighteen, eight point two percent under projection.
I do have a question about that. Do, do you take into account the island annexations that take place when cities-
Do, do you take into account the island annexations that take place when cities annex and county islands, and so they go out of the county world and they go into the city world?
It's not, not, well, it's taking account into the numbers, but it could account for some of the lower population growth is from annexations, but it wasn't calculated separately because it's a combined number. That's something we could do in the future, though, to look at, to break it out. The housing growth also has been very limited. You look at 2010, there was 39,109, and by 2015, there was 39,341, that's only a 232 house increase. And then when looking at the, what the projections were in the cap, it was almost 1,000 units per year were projected, and that's, you know, would have made over 5,000 units. But we're nowhere near that, and that makes a, a big difference on what emissions could have been for the unincorporated county. Commercial development, industrial development, also pretty modest growth in the county over this period. The total project issued building permits were 145,974 square feet total, and industrial 116,651. And then the major kind of institutional project would have been the South County Detention Center. There was a fairly large almond storage warehouse, so probably for economic development purposes, not so great, but you know, once again, this is unincorporated, and the, the cities have been doing a little bit better than the county has in this area. Looking at vehicle miles traveled, the vehicle miles traveled is also, there's a couple sources for getting vehicle miles traveled. One of them's the state of California's mission factors model has projections, and also the COG makes projections. Comparing what was projected for a couple of years ago for this timeframe versus what the, the cap forecast at, when it was adopted, it's like 20 percent below forecast for 2014 and a little over like 21 percent the following year, so it's under, under projection. Looking at energy efficiency and sustainability features, the new, new residential development since 2014, that's when the previous version of Title 24 was adopted, we had the presentation earlier today. The houses that are built on the new standard from the 2013 are 25 percent more efficient on average than the previous standard. Now that new one is in effect, that's another, I think it was, mentioned it was 15 percent more for future homes. On the commercial side, it's 30 percent better than 2014, so anything that's been built since that time would be that much more efficient than the older generation of buildings. The solid waste diversion rate, that's another statistic to look at, and county's on track with a 63.7 percent rate currently, and with the goal of getting to 75 percent in the next four years or so. And the water savings, a little more difficult to keep track of in the county because a lot of the individual wells, and, but just in general, the anybody, any new development has to achieve rates indoor and outdoor, about 25 percent from different plumbing standards and then the landscaping standards, and then on the existing things, it's mainly just general conservation programs. Bright spot for the county is how the solar projects are coming in, and you can see here that the total's been close to 2,400, no, 2,435 permits total issued. A lot of those were single family residential solar home retrofits primarily. And then you see that the, but the, the big volume would be the, the 22 utility scale solar project, you know, generating 37, 377 megawatts. And just for reference, that's the total of the 457 megawatts, that's powers about 75,000 homes. There's a little surplus on, at least on the home side for Tulare County. Looking at what the state's doing, the, the governor and legislature went pretty, well, very heavily into the regulating greenhouse gases in the last number of years since AV-32 was adopted in 2006. These have been gradually going into effect over time, and we have the fuel efficiency standards for our California vehicles, the fuel, low carbon fuel standard make the gasoline or diesel less carbon intense. Trucks, the building efficiency standards, CalGreen Building Code for some of the sustainability things and water conservation. Then for the utilities themselves, they have to comply with the renewable portfolio standard, that back to some of the solar and wind generation. Water efficiency for the model water landscaping ordinance, and the diversion mandate, and then the cap and trade programs, the kind of overarching, if the state's ever short, they're supposed to be coming, cracking down on cap and trade. However, cap and trade hasn't been reauthorized past 2020, but for now, it's, it's still in place. Little summary, you know, we're on track to achieve the target in 2020 right now. The growth in population, housing, vehicle miles traveled are lower than predicted in the cap, and this results in lower than projected growth in emissions. And the state regulations have resulted in substantial reductions from both existing sources of emissions and the new sources, and that state is indicating they're on track to meeting the statewide target. Then looking at things like conservation and sustainability measures for solar, water conservation, energy are also on track and for the county in achieving what was expected, or more, actually more than was expected in, in the cap at this time.
Before you leave that, why can I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You know, since we're on track to achieve the 2020 target, there's, you know, a number's been set, you had a nice graph there showing where we're actually trending below that. Tell me no one gets to move the numbers before we get to the end. I mean, that, that's my concern, is you do really good, you know, oh yeah, we're, we're trending under, then all of a sudden they go, oh great, Tulare County's, County's doing wonderful, let's lower their number. Let's punish them for doing so well. Tell me no one gets to fart with that number.
We're, we're good through 2020, then in 2030, there is a new target, SB 32 has been adopted this year, and that creates a, a new target out in the future. The state's now developing their scoping plan for, to, how the, the state's gonna do their part. They, they most likely will be asking for the local governments to do something, and it's, you know, remains to be seen what that is. And so I, it's, you know, the goalposts will be moved, and.
Well, if anything like the state normally does, they're gonna shove it all down onto us.
Possible.
Possibly, yeah.
I'm ready to move.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if I may just take a moment, because very respectfully, I think this is an important moment in time. Not only is this important because of this very complex and comprehensive report that Tulare County is complying with so well, but it represents the culmination of a long process, a process that began over 15 years ago, when this board had the foresight to direct that a general plan be prepared for the 21st century. And in 2012, your board adopted the general plan update that would go through 2030, litigation ensued, a very tedious and lengthy process had occurred with regard to the production of a settlement agreement. And in that settlement agreement, in particular this year, a Herculean effort was mounted, principally by the Resource Management Agency, to knock off item after item, marching towards the conclusion, the culmination of that process of settlement. And this action today represents the end of that journey. The general plan, which has been still operating, still working, still producing value to the public, can now be safely defined as being in the clear to go forward for the next 10 years and beyond. So I'd like to thank this, this consultant here, Dave Mitchell, who has provided tremendous service over the years to this county in terms of air quality, but in this very nebulous, ambiguous, and very difficult to find area of climate action, so thank you, sir. In addition, I would like to thank the Resource Management Agency, Mr. Ruiz, Mr. Washam, and of course, Mr. Guerra, in getting their arms around something that was so difficult, so impossible to manage, and bringing it to a very definite, specific, and clear conclusion. So, Mr. Chairman, it is with, with great joy that I say, we're still standing, and we're still open for business, and we're still producing, and this is the day when we can say we're at the end of the line. So thank you all.
One, one other quick comment, too, I, I was just thinking about, I just leaned over to Alan, I said, you know, that's why we didn't need to be, why we didn't need to have impact fees. You look at the growth in the county, how could we justify impact fees when you don't have the kind of growth that would dictate we needed to have impact fees? I mean, so few units over so long a period of time scattered across the, the length and breadth of the unincorporated parts of Tulare County, really does not amount to an impact on your, on your resources of, of any magnitude. So I think we, the county was appropriately, did the appropriate thing in not adopting impact fees.
Great job, staff.
Good job.
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
Moved by Supervisor Worthy, second by Supervisor Cox, cast your votes. Vote unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item 57, Emergency Groundwater Ordinance.
Good afternoon, Board, CAO, Mr. Sims, Denise England, Deputy CAO for Government Policy and Programs. The matter before you today is to provide direction to staff regarding whether or not to develop an emergency groundwater ordinance. Mr. Reese sent the bar pretty high this morning. I don't have 95 slides for you, unfortunately, I only have about 10, which basically just outline the agenda item. So the Water Commission formed a groundwater subcommittee and tasked that subcommittee to discuss a potential groundwater ordinance to address conditions of groundwater overdraft in Tulare County. This happened in mid-2015. That group met twice, and when it came back to the Water Commission for an update, the Agriculture Policy Advisory Committee, also known as APAC, requested a joint subcommittee to discuss the matter further. So a joint subcommittee was formed, and they met three times from December 2015 through February 2016, and initially they identified the following issues to solve with a proposed ordinance. And those issues were to prevent costly financial mistakes for landowners, protect existing wells slash developed lands, and to minimize the risk of state, the state enacting new laws if the county did nothing. There was a bill last year that did not go through the legislative process, but it would have required a, a pretty draconian groundwater ordinance if a county did not have an ordinance in place. And so this group was looking to potentially put something in place prior to that bill being enacted. Like I said, it, it did not pass, however, it may come back in the next round. And so the Joint Groundwater Subcommittee came up with this, this proposal, and it was a motion to submit to the Board of Supervisors a recommendation to evaluate the Stanislaus County Groundwater Ordinance as a model, to proceed with an intent to create an emergency groundwater ordinance set to expire when the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act's groundwater sustainability plans go into effect in 2020, to control this construction of new groundwater wells for the purpose of A, preventing new land development, B, preventing non-irrigated land from coming into production, and C, to prohibit the intensified use on land with an unsustainable water supply. This particular proposal was rejected by both the Water Commission and APAC when it went back to their parent bodies. And so then, APAC and the Water Commission came up with their own proposal, each. So that, that's what that says. So the Water Commission came up with this recommendation, and that is to prohibit new well development on land that has not been in production in the previous 10 years, retain a hydrogeologist to determine standardized well separation requirements for newer replacement wells, as well as impacts of increased pumping capacity for newer replacement wells. And this particular proposal would, also proposes to exempt de minimis users. De minimis users is defined in SIGMA, and that's those wells that are, domestic wells that are pumping less than two acre feet annually. APAC came back with this recommendation, which was that the board not pass any groundwater management ordinance due to impending SIGMA legislation, and to not pass any moratorium on well drilling. So my analysis of these options, first of all, we are in the process of implementing and, and getting up to speed with SIGMA. We have formed several groundwater sustainability agencies. Those GSAs are in the process of developing data to start putting into place some parameters for the groundwater sustainability plans. As far as county resources go, some of those options require things like a hydrogeologist or some standardization. We don't currently employ professionals that have that expertise, so there would be an added cost. That cost would either have to be funded by the general fund or by increased permit fees, so it would, it would be passed on to the applicant. Administrative support, again, we don't have a lot of staffing to support a, a robust permitting process at this time. We also lack a lot of the data. Some of the other counties that have passed groundwater ordinances, like Stanislaus County or San Luis Obispo County, they have years of studies and data, and we, we really don't have that. And so before you today are these, there's actually four options. The first is the joint subcommittee's proposal, the second is the Water Commission's proposal, the third is APAC's proposal, and then the fourth is to take no regulatory action at this time and continue public discussion on that matter. I know there are several letters that were received relative to this, and I also know there are several folks in the audience wishing to speak to it, but I'm also willing to answer any questions you may have.
Just two quick ones. Number of well permits that we're issuing now, and is it still a race to the bottom? It seemed like for a, a couple of years, there was a race to the bottom. Everybody's going out getting permits to dig 16-inch wells, you know, three, four miles down, I don't know how far, but it seemed like there was a race to the bottom for a while. And so I'm wondering, is that race still going on, and are we issuing the, the 2,000-plus permits a year that we were a few years ago?
Hi, Nelsa Gonzalez, Environmental Health. We have had a decline, we're now at 1475 as of now. Last year, we had 2675, so it has decreased.
So roughly half this year.
They're still catching up. It's, it's being caught. They're just catching up.
I'm noticing drill breaks.
A lot of those were just people, their well, I just want to go a little deeper.
Correct, that includes.
Right. They weren't all.
They were not all new wells.
Farming operation wells, yeah.
Correct.
Mr. Vanderpool.
You know, one question I had for you Denise, and maybe you can clarify, I know we had looked at the Stanislaus ordinance, and, and we've had various subcommittees and advisory committees look at these things, but I had a question from a constituent about the intensification of water draw from the aquifer. So if they had a well that was, if someone had a well that was originally producing 1,000 gallons a minute, let's say, there is a crack in the casing, or something went wrong internally to cause that production to maybe slip to about 200 gallons a minute, and that constituent didn't have the money to maybe make the repairs, or live with it for a few years, and now we adopt this ordinance that models, let's say the Stanislaus, if it applies, but that does not allow for any intensification of groundwater pumping, but they're able to get that fixed and return it to the original 1,000 gallons a minute it was designed to produce, is that considered intensification or not?
I believe no, and we certainly could make sure that whatever we do encompasses that. There's been quite a bit of discussion about, even if you increase the production of the well, you may not necessarily be using more water because you're, you're irrigating the same crop or whatever, so, yeah.
I was just curious, that was a question that someone had asked me, and I didn't know the answer to.
I think one of the main misconceptions has been when these new wells have gone in, let's say agricultural wells that are replacement wells, even though their capacity is higher than the previous well, they're only used the same amount of water on those crops. They're not increasing their usage of water, it's just the efficiency of their pumps may be able to irrigate 10 acres at a time instead of five.
Or, the other thing about that, as I understand it, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but just as another comment to that, the deeper they go, if you had a well that was, that was producing 1,000 gallons a minute at 100 feet, and you're going down was, that was producing 1,000 gallons a minute at 100 feet, and you're going down 200 feet, you have a larger well, you have a larger well capacity, you may not, your actual capacity may still be the same. In other words, you have to have a larger motor, a bigger, a bigger well casing when you're pulling it at a greater distance to achieve the same output that you had before.
Right. Depends where your bowls are set.
And then, I had one other question, too. And when we talk about land that has not been in production for the last 10 years, let's say, for example, in Tulare, there were numerous properties that were annexed into the city. They were primed for development, ready to go, and development hasn't happened where they had annexed, or where they had thought it was going to. Are those individual landowners able to drill a well and farm that ground, highest and best use of their property, even though it wasn't farmed in the last 10 years because they had originally anticipated it was going to be developed into residential or commercial uses?
So, two things. We've received a lot of feedback on that 10-year window. It was sort of an arbitrary number selected by the groundwater subcommittee from the Water Commission, so certainly you could link them that out. Also, one of the key areas that we struggled with is that we, GIS had some data from the farm mapping program, which I believe is out of the Resource Agency at the state, and they were trying to support with data that additional land had come into production, but actually, that data showed that land, that agriculture had actually lost land over a 20 to, 15 to 20-year time period. So, it would be difficult, we would basically leaning on the honor system of people saying it had or had not been. If you don't have the data.
If I might respond, that 10-year thing gives me the greatest heartburn. Every day, I drive by two parcels of ground that probably equivalent about 60 acres that are, they're level ground, they were farmed historically, they're sitting in the out irrigation district, which has an excellent water table, an excellent water supply, they're not being farmed. They're owned by people who live out of the area, for whatever reason, they're sitting there vacant. I believe we have a very strong Fifth Amendment issue of taking. If you tell people they can't drill a well on that property, because that property might be worth $20,000 an acre now for someone to come in and develop it and farm it, but if I can't drill a well on it, what's it worth? It's worth, what, $500 an acre? $200? I don't know what it's worth. It's worth next to nothing. I mean, if I can build a house on it, because that's a de minimis one, but I just think that's a serious problem. The other thing about farming, and I think, you know, Mr. Vanderpoel kind of mentioned it, agriculture's a very dynamic process. I live next, close to an old airport, and I'm going to estimate, looking at aerial maps, that that's probably about an 80-acre parcel. It was not farmed for 70, probably 70 years. It was developed right, I think, after World War, after World War II. Today, somebody went there, bought that property, ag property are such a value, they scraped off the runway, it's all planted citrus. Now, if we had that rule in place at the time, they could not drill a well. They couldn't farm that property. Now, is that good, is that good ag policy in the county of Tulare, the number one ag county, where we've got land that, because probably goes in and out of production. It could have been a railroad right-of-way for 100 years, now the railroad's gone. But we put, if we can get it back in ag production, we'd lose land for other reasons. I mean, but if land comes in, land goes out. But when you have these kind of arbitrary rules that says, well, if you haven't farmed that property for 10 years, no more water for you, I think we have a real problem. The other thing is that unintended consequences, these people are not farming their property, they're not contributing to the problem. They're not pumping anything out of the ground. So, that means they're leaving water behind for other people to use. When you say that the rule is, it's going to be implemented in year so-and-so, if you don't farm this property within that timeframe, you won't be able to drill a well, guess what's going to happen? People are going to drill wells ahead of time, put it into production, exacerbating the problem probably. I just think that whole thing is very arbitrary, and I believe we have a takings problem of taking away people's property rights. So, I, that, when I first heard about that, that was my immediate reaction, that I have a real heart, part of that. I think the thing we need to remember is, if you look at, and Stanislaus is a good example, many of those counties, especially when you kind of get from Madera northward, and in Fresno also, they have this area from where you had historic irrigated croplands to this area that might go for miles before you got to the Sierra Nevada foothills, that was kind of this rolling, rocky, vernal pools, dry, dryland farming. Well, when the price of almonds got so high and so forth, people started going out there and prospecting and putting in new wells and developing this property with drip systems and putting in trees and different kind of products. Really, we don't have much of that in Tulare County. Most of our property is pretty well developed right up to the edge of the foothills, and where it's not, like down in Mr. Ennis's districts, because they just don't have any water. And so, they're not developing it because there's no, they don't have water. So, I think we're, in some cases, we're kind of looking for a problem that doesn't necessarily exist in our county. And so, I, I'm inclined to think that we need to let SIGMA do its thing. It's going to take care of this problem. We're all going to have to comply with it, and it's, and that timeframe is moving quite rapidly, and it has a longer time horizon, but I mean, we have a lot of wells that are on the books that need to be drilled. Most of those are probably domestic wells. People don't have, you know, once they have the money, hopefully, they'll probably want to drill a well so they have, take a shower again in their house or whatever. But in our case, almost without exception, wells that are drilled are replacement wells. They're not prospecting wells. They're not going out there and developing new fields and intercepting water that's going off into other people's properties. That's, that's not really, that I'm aware of. I don't think that's a problem in Tulare County.
You know, one other thing I was going to comment on, too, Steve was starting to get there towards the end of your comments about SIGMA, and I think we have to be very careful as a county to paint a very broad brush stroke across the entire county, because we do have diverse basins, sub-basins, et cetera. We have multiple GSAs that are all going to be acting and taking on the role of the amount of water that can be, or regulating the amount of water that can be extracted from the grounds, et cetera. So, I really look at what we're looking at today with this emergency ordinance has to be almost a transitionary thing to take us from today to the full implementation and operation of SIGMA. And I just think that's something we all have to be mindful of, too.
The reason this came forward is for areas, like you said, Stanislaus, Merced, that's gone on for years. They've gone in and took pasture land into almonds. But what you don't understand, this has happened in Tulare County, and it's happening again south of Dukor, because we have a different type of topography than you're used to where you're at. And in the 70s, the McFarlane brothers came in off of Highway 65 and planted a ton of almonds on the east side of Highway 65 and sold them out to investors. The people who are coming in now, a lot of them even up north, they're investors. And these investors don't realize that there is not sustainable groundwater for the crops that they're growing, but I start to see it now happening again off of 65 on the east side, not to the extent that we see up north, but it is happening in certain areas. Now, if you drive up Highway 198 and you head toward Lemon Cove, there is a pasture, piece of pasture land, there is pasture forever, as I, now, I think it's pistachios. So, that was a new development of pasture land. What concerns me is the fact that, at our CSAC meeting last week, I sat in the Agricultural Committee, and I asked one of the groundwater people in charge for the state, I said, what are your ultimate goals? What I see is their ultimate goals is retiring a million irrigated acres in the state of California through SIGMA. And he did not dispute that fact. So, whatever straw you put in the ground is going to be part of that cumulative part of SIGMA. So, I think what I pushed forward was the fact that we can't really afford new land development on non-irrigated farmland. Now, historical farmland like you have, you've got guys out here east of town that had walnut trees, and they haven't farmed them for 20 years, waiting for development. I think that's a different area. You are in a prime agricultural area. I think what we're trying to prevent is the foothill-type development, which is, which is going on in the state of California.
And I appreciate that, because I think that, that's the thing that, if we had that, and that's why I made the comment, is that I'm not aware of that, that we have that problem. But if we are having that problem, then I can see where that would be addressed. And I think one of the arguments for that is that historically, and when I say historically, I mean, not just historically in the last 15 or 20 years, but that has never been irrigated cropland, ever.
And that's what we're talking about.
And those kind of situations are somewhat different. And there's the, another issue which arises with that, and that is if it's never been farmed that way, and now they put a well in the ground, well, guess what? They're intercepting a water flow that probably was getting to somebody downstream. So, they're actually, and I've seen this happen, too, up in Clovis area, north of, around Fresno, where people had groundwater for years and years and years, and then there was some development up above them, and suddenly, they don't have groundwater. So, there's obviously some kind of interception that's taking place. So, I could see a distinction there, but I think, but not, to me, it's not about a 10-year window, or something like that. If you're saying from a historic standpoint, if you have not had, if this is not irrigated croplands, and temporarily, we're going to put a moratorium on drilling wells until we get through the SIGMA process or something, that I would be more inclined to go along with something like that, but, but not the arbitrary 10-year period.
Well, I think you can modify it, just seeing if it's never been irrigated. Land that's never been irrigated.
And you could make exceptions, so that if someone finds a new water source, or the hydrologist comes in and they establish, okay, this has never been drilled, but I just found this lake of water I've gone into my property that nobody ever accessed before, and it's a sustainable amount, or whatever the case may be, you might be able to do something like that, but otherwise.
My way of thinking on pasture land and going out there and development, we need...
You're talking unirrigated pasture land?
Yeah, I'm talking about rangeland that nothing's ever grown on, never been, we need to fall back right now. We can't continue to go out and develop farmland if we don't have the water now. I mean, what are we thinking? And what about the poor guy that buys that, say, 1,000 acres of pistachios, and then there's no water to water it with? He's going to take it. He's going to take it big time. So, my way of thinking was, if it's never been irrigated, if it's been rangeland for cattle, don't go out there and start trying to develop it, especially right now.
Unless you can find, like I said, have some hydrology standards.
Although, yes, someone goes out and buys 1,000 acres of pistachios without doing their due diligence, they almost deserve it.
That's standard.
It looks, it looks to me like we're leaning towards option four, though, not to take any immediate regulatory action, but to send these comments back to staff, have them send them through these two groups again, through the AIPAC and the Water Commission, and return, because at this point, I'm not comfortable with doing any kind of moratorium. We haven't heard that nasty word yet. I think it's a nasty word when we talk about doing this, but I think what we've said today needs to go back through those advisory groups, be, you know, bounced off them and then...
Well, and I think we, I think we need to hear from the people out in the audience, too, what they want. I do have Doug Phillips here. You tried to come up and talk to us earlier, and this is why we have this stuff on the agenda, so you got the floor.
Thank you. Doug Phillips, apologize for speaking previously in an attempt to get out early, but I would have missed all this. Well, I like what I've heard here so far on this issue. Like I say, I've been farming for over 45 years here and have property east side, Ivanhoe, Woodlake, Farmersville, Exeter, Stone Corral, Elderwood areas, and that area was developed years ago. I've got 100-year-old orange grove, and this is not what you described in Stanislaus, where we were fully developed with permanent crops. Water and groundwater are vital to our farming operations, and we know we're going to have to face the consequences of SIGMA, and we do have these GSAs going, and I appreciate your help on bringing the white areas into those GSAs. I think you need to wait and let the GSAs get the data, get some scientific evidence as to what's going on with the groundwater. We know it's been going down because of the drought and, and because of some of the regulatory stuff coming out of the delta, where they're dumping billions of gallons into the ocean instead of sending it this way. But that's, my recommendation is, and the one thing, it says option three, but the option to do nothing at this time, let, let the GSAs get more information, see where this is going. I think in the end, the only way you can be sustainable is you have to have surface water. In my case, it's Kewee or front water, like, like many of us on the east side, and the only other way is your proximity to a river, to be able to be truly sustainable. So, there's going to be winners and losers, and some of the people that are not in, don't have surface water rights are going to be in trouble. But until we, we really get the facts, I hope you guys will just look at the situation and take no regulatory action, because we don't need any more regulations at this point. We've already got the nitrates and erosion, and I don't need to hire a hydrogeologist just yet. But thanks for listening.
Thank you for your input, Doug. Appreciate it. Next? Yes, come on.
I have some written comments that I will leave with Ms. England here, and I'll summarize those. I, I'm Paul Hendricks. I'm the manager of the Tulare Irrigation District, and I'm here today to represent what's called the Mid Keweea Groundwater Sustainability Agency, which is made up of the irrigation district in our two neighboring cities, Visalia and Tulare. I will just touch on some of the points that have been brought up earlier. Our preference as a, we call them the GSAs, our preference is, yes, that the county, at this point in time, go with either option three or four, and leave this, this process in the hands of the GSAs who are actually being mandated by the state to put some of these types of things in place over time through their developing GSPs. The requirements by the state are very specific within SIGMA. They leave alone with the counties the well permitting process that you have in place today. Certainly, land use decisions are totally under the purview of the county and cities. SIGMA doesn't step in front of those things, but things like well interface, well spacing, well capacities, and ultimately, well extraction rates are going to be the responsibility of the GSAs. So, options three or four do represent our preference. However, we do have immediate problems in this county, as I think has been, has been touched upon. We still may be in the middle of the drought. Water levels are falling rather precipitously in some areas more than others. One of your other subjects on the agenda did show that there has been some population increase over a number of years, and in this county, by and large, people do use groundwater, so there's more pumping going on to supply urban and residential needs as well. So, in the meantime, with these immediate issues, one thing that I could suggest, and I do have the support, I've talked about this briefly with Mark Larson, he may be in the room yet, he represents the Greater Keweea GSA, which is a whole different set of ditch companies and others involved in GSA and GSP development. There is a provision in SIGMA that allows the GSAs to request of the county, submit to us, let us take a look at these well permit requests as you receive them. And we can take a look at those, you know, as GSAs, we're trying to acquire the expertise, hydrogeologists and others, to start to assess our particular areas and the problems, the rates of decline in water quality, those types of things. So, maybe we can lend a hand in a more informal case-by-case basis for the time being while we're working on these plans. And then, certainly, when we have the plans in place, there ought to be a formal coordination, communication process in place with the county by which the well permitting and the well extraction and regulation parts of the GSP need to come together and be like a well-oiled machine, but we don't have that yet. But certainly, we can offer, maybe we can lend a hand here in the, in the next few years. So, with that suggestion, I think that concludes my comments.
Paul, I want to address that suggestion. Without us putting something in place, we have no authority, we can take your advice, but we have no authority to act on your advice.
I think that's right, and I think even in SIGMA, when it comes to permitting a new well, that is not something that you're under any obligation to take the advice from a, from a GSA.
But even if we took your advice, if we do not have something in place, we have no ability to follow through with your... to follow through with your advice. So what, what I would suggest back to the GSAs that are here, they need to look at that. On how do you, how can we interact with the GSA on different projects that you're concerned about in the GSA that comes before us for permitting?
Yeah, maybe that dialogue, um, maybe that's the way this can play out is, as you develop this ordinance and decide what to put in it and this, if you're going to go with three or four that involves further deliberation, uh, maybe you could involve the GSAs, there's probably going to be, there, we think three of them now in the county that, that you could interface with and maybe we'd have some suggestions for you that we think that we can implement on our more specific, uh, regional scale.
Well, I, I, it's my comment on it, I, it sounds good to me, but I'm a little concerned about the fact that oftentimes well drilling is sort of like, "I'm out of water." Right? And so I, I, my next phone call is to the well driller who's going to contact the county, he's going to run down and get a permit and he's going to start drilling my well tomorrow. And, and in many cases, that's what we deal with.
Right.
And so, because I, my initial thought is when we do this all the time and planning projects is, you know, you send out notices to various agencies to wait for them to comment on something, you know, we could do something like that with wells too. But that's not the, to me, that's not so much a real world situation.
Well, I don't think we're concerned about replacing wells.
About new wells?
We're, we're talking about new wells on new land.
Oh, that, oh, that's, I, I see that as a very different situation, I, I, I can, I can see that.
And in the emergency cases where somebody's out of water, it's the middle of the summer, whether it be domestic or even for an agricultural use, I mean, there, there would have to be a fairly short timeframe that either the GSA can live within and provide some quick and useful feedback or it can't, I mean, that's, that's reality.
Thanks, Paul. Think temperance flat. More water.
Paul?
Who's this guy?
Paul's got in the front of the line there, thank you. Uh, you know, Paul Boyer, I work at Self-Health Enterprises, I was also just recently appointed to the Greater Keweeah GSA. And, uh, I want to express first of all, the support for option two that the Water Commission has. And I realize what you brought up Supervisor Worthley about maybe there's a way to tweak that. I think the, the main concern that I've heard is that we don't want to take unirrigated marginal land and put in irrigation and compete for that limited amount of groundwater. Uh, also what I, I support about, uh, the Commission's recommendation is, uh, having some, uh, hydrogeologist or some expert look at, you know, what should be the spacing between wells? Where we're not drilling wells too close to each other that are competing with each other. That said, um, the, uh, I'm for ta- the county taking action now and not waiting for sigma to take place because my understanding is that the plan will need to be in place, but we won't, it won't actually be totally implemented to actually get to where things need to be, I think, another, till 2040 and-
Well, the plans get implemented, but you have a-
Yeah.
2040 horizon.
Correct, correct, okay, thank, and thank you. And so I, I think that, uh, you know, we're, with the, with the overdraft conditions we have in the valley, if some things aren't done that are simple and hopefully non-bureaucratic or minimal bureaucracy to do common, a common sense approach, I think that can help so that later on, you know, it's going to get, we're going to get out of this situation of overdraft quicker. And I would love to see it then in 2040 that Tulare County is the number one agricultural producing county in this, in the country again, but if we don't do something now to protect that water, it's going to hurt our economy, hurt our communities. Lastly, um, I checked with Stanislaw County, uh, back when the Water Commission was looking at, you know, how their ordinance is working and, and I realized there's a lot of different situations up in there than there is down here. Uh, option one, uh, says evaluate what Stanislaw County ordinance is doing. And I still think that might be a good idea, even if you, if you implement option two to just look at, are there ways to do things to, um, prevent our groundwater level going down? That's affecting, as we know, hundreds of families that are out of water right now, that there really aren't the resources to address in, in a reasonable period of time. So again, I, I hope that you will, um, do something as opposed to not taking any action and that it will be something that helps the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act accomplish the goals that it wants, that we all want to see it do. Thank you.
Good afternoon Chairman, members of the board. Kristin Dobbin with Community Water Center, I've been before you, um, before on this issue. Um, I want to add a few things to the discussion, but first I want to clarify a point from Ms. England's presentation. The Joint Groundwater Subcommittee, which made the first recommendation, was made up of four AIPAC members and four water commissioners. And that recommendation was made directly to your board. So that recommendation wasn't rejected by the Water Commissioner, the AIPAC. They did take different recommendations, but all three of those recommendations have been made directly to your board and are waiting for action. And briefly in response to your, um, comments Supervisor Cox, I have sat in on all these meetings for a year and a half now and I feel perfectly confident, I rarely speak on the behalf of other people, but I feel very confident in saying on the behalf of commissioners and many people involved with this, we have gone round and round and had many subcommittee meetings on this. And I think now is time, you have three, four recommendations before you, now the time is to actually take action because that power resides with your board. So the couple of things I would like to add to this discussion is while the staff report and presentation do an excellent job of summarizing what's happened since mid 2015, when this issue first came before the Water Commission, I think what's missing is how the Water Commission started talking about this in the first place. And any conversation about a potential ordinance or continuing with the status quo in the county needs to be based in the facts. And the facts are that in Tulare County, we have sixteen, more than 1,600 reported well failures. In that same period, we have issued more than 6,000 well permit, permits. And while the number is going down, that is still greatly increased from previous years prior to the drought. While temporary tanks and bottled water are really important, we cannot continue to pour money into emergency solutions without looking at the root cause of this problem, which is declining groundwater levels. Um, you may not be able to restore water to the wells of the 1,600 that have lost their well, but what you can do is prevent more families from losing their water supplies by taking action right now. Secondly, with regards to sigma, I think we need to remember that sigma is a law. It's not going to solve anything, the implementers of sigma are going to solve it. And amongst others, including some in this room, the implementers are you all. And you certainly can wait a year or two before taking action on this issue, but all that's going to do is put our ability to maintain local control in jeopardy and make it that much more painful to get to the mandates of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act down the line. Thirdly, I'd like to say what is before you today is whether or not we should move forward with this process. Until language is developed, we cannot have a substantive conversation about the costs and benefits of any potential action. And so it's just too hypothetical and I think it would be premature to vote for options three or four at this point. Let's develop something, let's continue to have conversations and at that point you can make your final decision when there's a draft ordinance before you. Finally, in my hand, I have over a hundred support letters from Tulare County residents supporting your board taking action on an emergency groundwater ordinance. Tuesdays during the week is a hard time for people to show up, but there is a lot of support across this county for sensible and proactive groundwater policy. Um, these have all been faxed to your board. And so I would just like to say, I urge you to move forward with this process so we can figure out what that looks like for our county and I urge you to vote for option one.
Good afternoon Chairman, members of the board. For about 10 years, I've been a farmland advocate-
By yourself, please.
Uh, Daniel O'Connell, I'm with the Central Valley Partnership, I live in Fresno, 3260 East Kirkoff. But as I was saying, I've worked mostly on land use and saving farmland for 10 years, but it brings me over and into other issues and in particular to, um, see the leadership in various, especially boards of supervisors. And I wanted to comment on Stanislaw County. Um, you know, Vito Chizia and Jim DiMartini, uh, these are farmers, just like many of you. And they did a lot of due diligence here, they talked this out and it was particular to the characteristics of their county. And just similar to what Supervisor Ashida was saying, there's particularities to each county. There's a big issue playing out here and especially with the irrigated lands, especially because Tulare is so unique in being the number one producer, um, to safeguard those extraordinary soils, those history, historic farmers that are farming now, to be proactive now and to begin ahead of the GSA development and maybe with an eye on what the repercussions of that GSA development mean. Do you want those new lands that aren't viable long-term and aren't, don't have the best soils that are kind of speculative? Do you want those in now, something like Supervisor Ashida says? Moving this back to the committees is a good idea, you already have so much expertise on this board. It seems to make sense to begin to, uh, develop a policy now and, uh, amongst each other with your committees in conversation with the agricultural groups and the farmers. So I'd, uh, just support that moving forward right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good afternoon Chairman and members of the board. My name is Lucy Hernandez and I'm from West Goshen. Um, I'm here to support, uh, one because, um, I live in West Goshen and I, we are connected, I have the community with Cow Waters, but we have a, a lot of private well owners there that their wells are going dry. So far I noticed four big tanks in front of my ne- my closest neighbor's yard. And I think we need to implement some ordinance right now, not wait for sigma or for the, uh, GSA to be, become in place. And, um, I'm asking the board to implement some ordinance that limits increasing groundwater extractions right now. Please, that would help our residents. Thank you.
Hi, buenas tardes.
This is Sandra Garcia and Pedro Ramirez, I'll be translating for her.
Sandra Garcia y mi comunidad vengo de Poplar.
I'm Sandra Garcia from the community of Poplar.
Y vengo a decirles que mi comunidad está, ha estado afectada desde que empezó la sequía.
I just want to come and, and talk about how my community has been impacted by the drought, since the drought.
Tenemos varias familias que tienen pozos privados.
In our system, we have, in our community, we have, uh, a number of families that have private wells.
Y les han dado permisos a otras personas para hacer el pozo más para abajo.
And throughout the years, they've, but, there's many people have gotten permits to make the wells deeper.
Y estas personas no tenían problemas porque ellos tenían agua y cuando empezaron a, a hacer los rancheros su pozo.
And while there wasn't really a problem, since the drought and new permits have been gone online around the community, they've been having problems.
So ellos tienen el popote más grande y dejaron a estas familias sin agua.
So, so to use the analogy, uh, these people have a much longer straw and they're sucking up the water from the rest of the community members.
So nosotros no queremos afectar a nadie.
Uh, so we don't want to have any problems with anybody or impact anybody.
Pero queremos que sea parejo, que todos tengan agua y que no nomás porque unos tienen dinero.
Uh, we just want the process to be fair, equitable and everybody to have their fair share of water and the process to be, uh, transparent.
Ellos se reparten más agua.
Um, they tend, those that have the most means have access to more water.
Y nosotros estamos apoyando la opción número uno y quiero, pues con mucho respeto les queremos pedir.
Uh, and with a lot of respect, I ask that you support, uh, option one.
Que la mesa se tome acción inmediatamente para proteger nuestra agua subterránea.
And that we hope that the Board of Supervisors takes action to protect our groundwater.
Y aprendamos valores, cuidemos la agua para todos.
And that we, we can learn values and value the resources that we have like water.
Y gracias.
Thank you.
Buenos dias, buenas tardes, perdón. Mi nombre es Josefin Alvarado, represento Campesinas Unidas en Porterville y vengo a saludarlos.
Uh, my name is Josie Alvarado from the, from Porterville and I represent, uh, the Farm Workers Committee.
Y quiero pedirles que lo único que ustedes que están en la mesa, que nos apoyen para que en la acción número uno que nosotros también apoyamos.
Uh, I, I come here to represent my group and hope that you support, uh, option one.
Y porque es muy indispensable que tengamos agua para los niños principalmente por la salud.
Uh, when we look at this issue, we think about the schoolchildren and the children that might be impacted by the lack of water in their communities.
Y yo sé que ustedes tienen la palabra para poder ayudarnos en su mesa.
And so we know that you have a lot of authority and, and, and the power to, to, to help our communities.
Porque necesitamos de emergencia que ustedes pongan una, un apoyo en nuestra ordenanza.
And so we hope that you, you do treat this as an urgent situation and you do establish an emergency ordinance.
Para el futuro de todos.
Uh, for the future of everybody.
Y yo sé que ustedes pueden ayudarnos.
And I know you will help us.
Y se nos agradeceríamos mucho.
And we will gr- be grateful to you.
Porque podemos unidos hacer todo esto.
So to, together we can fight and, and make our communities better.
Gracias muy amable.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Art Rodriguez, I'm from the community of Poplar and I am one of the newest elected, uh, CSD, uh, board members there. You know, I decided to be a board member there because, you know, as, as time continues to progress, we, we, we gotta move with what's happening now. I feel the responsibility that I've taken is to ensure that we have safe, affordable and sustainable drinking water for the community members there, as well as I feel that that's your guys' responsibility, tremendous responsibility that, and I know you guys take serious and I know you guys, you know, think forwardly and think, what are some of the impacts that your decisions today will have tomorrow? Um, it's probably something you guys heard a lot, you know, several times, but this year, we, we, we have three wells that, that provide water to the 2,500 community members there and one of them went dry this year. Um, the, one of the other ones is more of a backup, um, and it, and it, and, you know, water's continually dropping. So to say that our groundwater extraction or our wells aren't dropping the water level isn't, it, it's not right. One good, one point I do want to make, um, is in looking at these proposals, uh, put together by the committees, I see what one is, I see what two is, but maybe Chairman, you can answer this, what's the difference between three and four? I can't see one, doing nothing is expecting to wait for sigma to happen. To me, it's really diversionary. Also, um, I understand Tulare County, I'm proud of being the most agricultural producing county there is and, and I understand it has to be sustained. I mean, that, you know, we, that's our, that's our economy, that's our business, but how are we gonna put a gold mine when there's no gold or, you know? We have to think for long-term, not just today and the profits today. I know that a few, the board members here will not be here in, in over two years, right? I think three of you? Yeah? And, oh, I don't know, and it's, yeah, okay. Well, and I, and I, I believe that you guys are not the mind that, hey, I'm not on the board, it's not my problem anymore. So with that, you know, just, it, I understand, this is, this is Tulare County, this is, this is what we do. But we, we do gotta take some steps. 6,000 well permits since 2014 and we've lost 1,600 wells to, and domestic wells, I, that's not, that's not safe, that's not responsible, I'm sorry, that's not responsible or sustainable, so. With that, I, I really, um-
Those weren't all farm wells, those 6,000 wells, were people drilling a little deeper to get their well-
Yeah, and, and, and I, and I wanna, I want to be able to quote some of that data, but I could not find any. So to say that none of those are new wells, it's, it's not right, you know, or-
No, 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 I would say, I, I mean, I don't know whether we have the data or not. I will, uh, with the exception of what these gentlemen have talked about where there have been some new wells drilled and new development, I, I, I'm going to estimate that well over 95% of those are replacement wells. Because like where I live, uh, I had to replace my well, my neighbor replaced his well. We didn't put new wells in, we replaced wells so we could still take showers in the morning. I mean, so that's, and people are still, if, so they can still farm. So the, the new wells that are, one thing we forget about here, we're in the millennium drought. This is the worst drought in a thousand years of record, that we think of in the San Joaquin Valley. You don't think that's going to have an impact? It has had a huge impact, that's why these wells have gone dry, that's why there's been two years of zero allocations on the Frank Kern Canal. The Frank Kern Canal was built to address this very issue, to address overdrafting back in the twenties and thirties in, in Tulare County. And, and down into Kern County. So this is not a new problem, it's exacerbated by a, a drought of all times. As a consequence of which, surface water that ordinarily would have been there for cities and for farming, did not, did not show up. So that's what we're dealing with right now and hopefully this is not some kind of new norm, we're, because if it is-
I hope not.
Goodbye everybody, we're all going to be leaving the, the San Joaquin Valley because there's not- not gonna be any water here. But, but we're gonna hope that this is a, a time which is gonna go back to normal, and we won't be having these kind of situations.
I'll just say one last quick thing, and in around and coming to board meetings, I've know we've had to look at different drill sites because several new 2,000, or 1,000-foot wells have been dug where we've thought that we were gonna put our, our CSD wells at, and those are, those are brand new wells, and they're popping up around quite a bit, is what I can see. Well, thank you guys for your time. This is just a consider for the future.
Supervisor Worthley has said, "The Kern-Frank Canal and that project was put in place because this whole valley was in overdraft." In the cities of Lindsay, for example, Shrapport would not exist today if it was not for that canal and Frank water. The reason we're having these problems on all these domestic wells and ag wells, the main reason is the fact we did not receive surface water for two years. So until the public understands this valley will not survive, your towns will not survive, your communities will not survive without surface water. And that's why Temperance Flat is so important to get built, because that's the best chance we have of surviving, is have an additional million acre feet that we can use on occasion to supplement the drought conditions that we have and to ensure deliveries of surface water.
And to do recharge.
And, and surf, and groundwater recharge. But without that dam and without the guarantees from the state of California that they were gonna provide surface water, there is no sustainable groundwater, period. And that's the other question I asked a guy from the state of California. I said, "Without surface water, we're wasting our time doing these groundwater plans." Because if you won't guarantee a certain amount of groundwater, there is no plan. So that's my soapbox.
Buenas tardes, señores de la mesa.
Good afternoon, board members.
Mi nombre es Raquel Sanchez.
My name is Raquel Sanchez.
Yo vivo en Tulare, California.
I'm from the city of Tulare.
Yo he sido afectada por la sequía y pues el condado.
So I, like many, and my family have been impacted by the drought.
Para mí es muy importante conservar el agua subterránea.
I, I personally believe that we need to find ways to conserve our groundwater.
Porque es el futuro para nuestras nuevas generaciones.
Because it is gonna be a resource for, for, for the future of our communities.
Y para todos los seres vivos que necesitamos los recursos naturales.
And for all, all humans and creatures that would, that need that resource.
Yo apoyo la proposición uno.
I support option one.
Gracias por su tiempo.
And I thank you for your time.
Esperamos que, por favor, nos ayuden.
And that we hope you help us.
Lo más que puedan. Gracias.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, County Council, Michael Spata. Thank you. My name is Larry Pelzer, 16865 Avenue 315, fourth generation farmer in the Woodlake and Ivanhoe area. And on behalf of 50 family members that farm 1,500 acres, and on behalf, I'm wearing another hat too, Tulare County Farm Bureau, we would prefer option three as the proper direction to the Board of Supervisors to adopt. We believe it is appropriate for the Board to find that the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, also called Sigma, will address overdraft conditions and take no further actions at this time. Steve, you're right. Pete, you're right. I permitted 50 well sites. We lost 70 wells on existing acreage, which we call legacy acreage, that my grandfather planted. And like Doug Phillips, we're farming hundred-year-old trees. And where we were getting 2,000 gallons a minute at 250-foot well, we're getting now 500 gallons a minute at a 420-foot well. So the 2,000 gallon, a minute was replaced by two new wells for 1,000 gallons a minute at an additional cost for electricity to pump. So we're just trying to sustain what we have, and I believe my ability to get a permit without a hydrogeologist on the, all these excessive fees is my private property right within that APN to get the water I need to survive my trees. Now, we're doing experimentation where we can, with polymers and such, flow bond, we think we can irrigate far less acre feet of water per year and still maintain production on citrus. So we're doing a lot of experimenting. But to permit 40 or 50 wells for the family is very expensive, and we don't like doing that. We hate it. But in order to survive, for the fifth generation, who my son wants to farm, we need to do that. But you're right, if we don't get surface water and the ESA or the EPA or whatever happens doesn't change, these property taxes I pay, there's about eight line items, take care of the, the school district, Quia Delta, we're all in in this community. We're not the enemy. We're here to be a part of the community. Just because we're farmers doesn't make us bad folks. And I hope that we don't get too irrational on emotion here and overregulate those of us that pay taxes, that help the county and the cities. And I hear a slight tremble and a slight rumble coming from the East Coast, so there's hope for a person like me. I think the Trump train is coming to town. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Energy's the answer.
Hello again. Yeah, hi, my name's Pedro Hernandez. Wow, right, this is a very controversial issue. Yeah, I'm here just to talk about, you know, a personal story. I am not a farmer, disclaimer, I'm not sure if you couldn't tell. But I have polycystic kidney disease, and so it is a chronic renal disease, and something essential for me to stay alive is a reliable, you know, drinking water source. What it is, is that my body cannot process certain toxins, and so, you know, if I don't watch what I eat, or if I, you know, don't take care of my own, my own hydration, my body slowly poisons me and my body therefore cannot take the toxins out of my body. So I, you know, water is just really important for my day-to-day life. You know, what really scares me is my dad almost died to this disease, and, you know, this is something that, you can look it up, you can Google it, is really gonna hit me by the time I'm 40 or 50, if I ever make it that far, you know. And so this water issue doesn't seem like it's going away. And, you know, everyone's fighting over different solutions, and everyone's fighting over the causes, you know, and the only thing that I, you know, I can say for sure is that it doesn't seem like it's going away. You know, and I understand that, you know, farmers definitely haven't, have invested, you know, a lot of energy. Farming is really hard, you know, no one's ever gonna deny that. But also, we have towns without reliable drinking water. You know, I've lived in the valley for 25 years, and I've done the tour of, you know, all these little valley towns, you know, I've drank in the water in Riverdale and Hanford, you know. Yeah, Mr. Worthley's smiling because, you know, I'm sure you've heard all those things about the water. You know, and in the same way that this council was talking about how, you know, marijuana's odor affects, you know, the quality of life, or how other people have talked about how, you know, the dairy smell affects, you know, just the quality of life. In that same way, you know, the water quality itself is very detrimental and does affect, you know, many people's confidence in drinking water. You know, and so I'm just saying, whatever you do, drinking water is gonna have to be a very, very long-term solution. And already it's been affected, you know, towns running out. My sister's house, you know, she just moved in like three years ago, and now her house is, and her house is dry and she can't afford it, and so she has to go, you know, fill up those big five gallon barrels, whatever, what have you. You know, and that's just an inconvenience too. You know, especially, I know it's wintertime and it's already really cold, but, you know, something I think about those big five gallon barrels is...
Could we have you wrap this up?
Yes, I will wrap it up right now. Is carrying one of those in 105-degree heat. You know, so I, I want the board to do something, you know, because you have everyone to be just responsible for, you know, and we all need drinking water and understand how water's important, every living life form needs it, and that should also accentuate the importance of, you know, action on this.
Mr. Chairman, I think a lot of people have the wrong idea. We're just talking about this groundwater sustainability and stuff about agriculture. It's not just about agriculture. It's about everybody that relies on water. A lot of people do not realize that there'll be many people who will pass away without having water to drink in two days. And the third day, a lot of people are gonna be on the verge of passing away without water. And on the fourth day, a large majority of people will, will perish because they don't have water. That's how important it is. It's just not agriculture.
Bob Lydicans, I am a farmer. We have sunk three new wells and shut down six. So we have cut down three wells that we were using. We've gone to drip irrigation, we've cut 60% of our use of water. And you know as a county how much land has been taken away from farming as cities expanded, roads expanded, we've cut down the farmland a great deal. But for every thousand acres of land taken over by cities, you're using the same amount of water. It's already been studied, the amount of water that's being used by an acre in the city is the same as the acre in the farmland. And so that's one in the same. So as the cities expand, you're still using the same water. Alan, you took my, my thunder away. Until we bring water in here, we can't stop it. Look at the slope of our rivers. We come down from the mountains and we go to the west side of the valley. We're dropping that direction. But look at our water table. 50-foot water table over on the east, where I am, 150-foot water table. Tulare, just a little bit to the west of me, is 500-foot water table, and your 3,000-foot over on the west. We're gonna be draining to the west, whether we pump water or not, whether we get any water in this area. Until we can bring back our water to the west side and bring up the level that we used to have, we will always be draining from this area in Tulare County. We have no choice but to be dropping. Every city will drop because the water is flowing to the west, underground. And until we wake up and bring it back, they cut the canals deeper up north to get the shipping in, to get the water out. 64% of our water of the valley is going to the ocean. Your greatest volume of water is in the north. You have all the water in the Sacramento River, which is five times more water than we have in ours, into Sacramento, you've got the American River, Stanislaus River, McCombey River, and the Cozumbe River, all going into the Delta. All of that's going to the ocean. And where does Sacramento, I mean, San Francisco get its water? From us.
Wollamette.
Etchechy. Going to the ocean. We're getting, losing our water, and now they want more of it because the fifth largest growing city in the United States is Sacramento, and Sacramento is dumping all its sewage into the Delta, as Stockton is. Not till 2020 do they have to do what we have had to do now and take care of their sewage. And so they gotta have more water to flush out the Delta and so on. That's what we need to change. Change that and bring, there's only 20% of that, 64% of the water going to the ocean. We need to take care of all our needs. That's all we need, and we need to bring it back. We used to have boats go to Stockton. You have no water, and that lake dry and you're 3,000 feet down, you're gonna drain. This area will continue to drain. I don't care what we do. We're gonna drain to the west, and our water table will continue to drop if we don't bring water back into the west side. Bring it up, we'll stop our drainage.
We need a better governor, Bob.
Mr. Chair, one thing that hasn't been said, and I, I've listened to the people that are talking, I've heard some farmworker families talk as well. You know, one of my big concerns has always been if we start restricting these farmers or these farming operations on the amount of water that they can get, and that's one of my big concerns with, you know, the new regulations that are, that are, that we're facing over the next few years, are the loss of jobs. What are these people gonna do? You know, they, they're gonna be unemployed. You know, we look at some of these smaller communities that are full of farmworkers. We need water, we need water. Well, you know, five years from now, if we've cut the water off to the farmers and just provided water into our cities or communities, they're gonna be losing their jobs. So that, that's a big concern of mine also. That's why I have such a high regard for the, the farmers and their property rights to, to, you know, access the water that's in their land. And most of them that have been doing it, as we've heard, for generations and generations. So I'm, I'm still, you know, very hesitant to do anything emergency to adopt any kind of ordinance soon.
Supervisor Worthley. If there are no other public comments, and I don't see anybody coming forward, I was gonna sort of flood, float a proposal out there. And that would be to do primarily to rely upon the Sigma process to deal with this, but to impose a temporary moratorium on new wells in...
New wells, unfarmed.
An unfarmed property, absent a hydrological study report that indicates that it can be done without, you know, damaging, because you could have a situation, as I said before, where someone finds a water supply we didn't know existed, and they, and there's no reason why they shouldn't be able to use that water. But absent that hydrological study, which would be a justification for it, no new wells in areas that have never been, never been farmed. Not 10 years, never been farmed, or agriculturally, I'm sorry, had applied waters to them. And then otherwise rely upon the Sigma process to deal with it. I, I think, I think that, that resolves a lot of the concerns people have about creating new impacts on the water table by, by having undeveloped water, property suddenly taking more water out of the ground.
Like I said, we shouldn't be out there trying to develop more farmland right now. It's never been farmed, when we can't take care of what we got.
I, I think you'll have, and I don't think you'll find a lot of objections to that approach, not only around the board here, but I think within, within the, the farming community and elsewhere.
Mr. Chair, I would, you know, a couple of things. I'm glad that we're talking about ways that we can kind of morph this around and make it work. I also think that we need to maybe retain a hydrologist to talk about the separation requirements. I know that the Sigma process is going to be doing that, but we do have the interim period between now and Sigma implementation. And I know that there are some separation issues that we should at least consider in the interim period. And I also think that we should be exempting de minimis users from our legislation or our ordinance because...
What was the last part?
Exempt, exempt de minimis users, so those wells pumping less than two acre feet annually.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that's your, your typical, your home replacement well, so.
If I might, if I might comment on, I've thought about that hydrology thing, and I, my, I, I think it should be somehow on an as-needed basis situation. In other words, I've had a couple of incidents in my, in my district, I'm sure you all have your stories. One where a community water system in Sultana, a pre-existing well, which had been there for a long time, suddenly the property owner next to it came in and drilled a well 50 feet away from it. I mean, and they, it was a replacement well, but why they moved it from where they were, which is a quarter of a mile away, to that location, I really don't know. And as that turned out, I think they actually were good neighbors and went back and drilled another well where they had it originally and, and have not used that well. But in those circumstances, where you have, maybe, maybe limiting it to where you have community water systems and there's a, and there's an infringement perhaps of additional wells coming by, I, because I think, I think to try to apply it across the board is to, is to dramatically increase the cost of the whole permit process.
Well, and I'm not talking about doing it, I, you know, I just threw it out there as an idea, not talking about it for every single permit. I was saying from, from a county perspective, just to give us general guidance, not even to apply actual teeth to it, but to say that you can't put a well within 100 feet of an...
But it doesn't work that way because it's not a giant lake underneath there.
No, I, I understand.
So you, you, in one instance, you, because you have well pumping situations, where you actually have a whole bunch of wells in one place, because they have a whole bunch of water in that place. And other times, you don't have that. So I think you can't, there's no, that, I don't think that would be effective or helpful, because you can't just apply a rule carte blanche across the valley floor. It has to be on a per, on a, on a, on a individual... It has to be on a per, on a, on a, on a individual, individualized basis.
I, I think that's where we rely and give direction to Denise, to talk to the different GSAs, what they're doing about the hydrology side. Because it's gonna get to that point with the, with the GSAs. So let's see what direction they're taking with the hydrology side.
Maybe move forward currently with the concept that I've talked about.
Yes.
Put that out for, for further study or this evaluation. The other, the other thing that Pete's talking about, hydrology.
What are, what are we gonna do today? What are we gonna do today?
Well, all we can, all we're gonna do is give direction, because we're not, we're not positioned that we don't have a document in front of us that we can actually adopt. But if we go forward with a concept that I have just put out there, and I think added to what Vanderpoel and Ashuda said about looking at the hydrology issue, having further study of that, because I don't think we're in a position to really make any kind of decision on that. I think there's uniform...
But what about people going out on rainland and...
I think that's, that's the one I think that there's uniform agreement on that.
Okay.
So on that, and relying upon the Sustainable Groundwater Act to help us deal with the other issues, I think that's an appropriate step we can take forward now. Not that we're gonna implement anything now, we don't have, we don't have an ordinance in front of us, but we can give that, that direction to staff to come back with an ordinance addressing that. But I, I don't think we can do a hydrological, one-size-fits-all type of thing, I don't see that, that happening.
I'm fine with that direction.
Have you got the direction, Denise?
You want me to restate that? I will restate that for the clerk to make sure that I've captured that and it can be in the record. So the motion is to primarily rely on Sigma, however, look at a proposed moratorium on unfarmed, defined as never been farmed, without a hydrologic study with the permit. And then I'm a little bit unclear, additionally, talk to the GSAs regarding hydrology and explore a contract with a hydrologist to look at separation requirements on a limited basis.
Well, I think, I think the thought there is that hydrology is very site-specific. And so I think it's maybe going out there and just evaluating what is, what is, what makes sense to do with hydrology. There may not be anything that would make sense. I mean, but I think going back and saying, "We want you to take a look at this, is there anything that we can adopt as a county's an ordinance on interim basis that makes sense when it comes to hydrology?" My suspicions are that probably the answer is no, because everything is so, so specific.
And one other item was to exempt the de minimis users.
I, I think we would just like a report back from the GSAs, where are they on hydrology? They may not even be there yet, but we'd just like...
A couple of them have hired a hydrologist already and are going to work on that. They're probably not very far along in their work plan, but they are starting to develop those items.
We're gonna bring this back to the Board.
If the audience has, as this is unfolding, one more, two more clarifying questions about what you're talking about.
Come on in, ask question.
The individual...
Self-help enterprises was that, good question. In the case where undeveloped land decides to go into dryland farming, depending on rain, dependent totally on rainfall, not, not irrigation, that might be a point of clarification in this ordinance of sorts that you're talking about. And also representing cities, at least in my case, Visalia and Tulare, there, there may be instances where land around the fringes of a city, a town, has not been farmed, has remained undeveloped for a period of time.
What we said, we're throwing that out.
Not, not only ag.
We're only talking about rangeland or...
Okay, so...
Where it's never ever had applied water, it's not, it's never been irrigated.
And it's agricultural development.
So land that has been annexed for development but hadn't developed, that could potentially still be farmed.
Or somebody had irrigated crop land and they, and they're, as you say, because their wells are not working temporarily, they're going to back to dry, dryland farming, they would not be included in that. It would be, it'd be those areas that have never had, you know, irrigated crop, crop land.
And all I'm saying is that there may be a few tracks around the edges of some of these cities that have not been farmed, ever. And I, I, well, I don't know that that's not occurred, but it...
Maybe portable.
So...
Well, there...
This, this, your prohibition on, on new development is not, not applicable to urban agriculture.
And it's not new to, new plan developments either.
And we're not prohibiting anything today, we're directing staff to come back with more information.
So regarding when to come back, so the Water Commission does not meet in December. Their, their meeting in January has been canceled, however, we could recall it. What is the Board's preference on getting a report back?
We'd like to get it as soon as possible. Get it back to us for our agenda as soon as possible. Got direction?
They need to vote on that, Michelle? Okay.
You could, you could continue to next week.
Continue fifty-eight, the last item.
Okay, we'll continue item fifty-eight to the next Board meeting. Appreciate everybody being here, appreciate your time and your input, so thank you very much.
If you're gonna continue item fifty-eight, can you take action on that to continue it?
Most to continue fifty-eight to next week.
Move by Cox, I can buy Worley.
District one and two.
Hey, it's unanimous, thank you.